Recording in progress.
Very much, we have a resident who's here with us today, who usually is always watching it online but chose to be present with us. So she is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Lori Moline with us today, so please lead us.
My name is Angela and I am Senator Biden of the United States of America. And I give you the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you Lori. She's punking me out on her head right now. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Yep. Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Deverhyt City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of April 29, 2025 as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saad. Please reach yourself. Any discussion on that? Just want to be clear, we do have a closed session that we are going to be stepping out for a quick 20, 30 minutes. We'll be back in here, so there's a closed session before we move on to the presentations in the Police Department. Any other discussion, hearing none? All in favor, please state "aye".
Aye.
Those are the polls. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is public hearings and public comments on anything they want to talk about. Seeing none? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none? Next up, comments from council members. Seeing none? Next up, announcements. Seeing none? Public comments again. Lori Moline.
Might as well get this all over with now.
How do you know that? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have three minutes.
If you don't already know, Lori Moline, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights. There was something that was brought up at the last meeting regarding trees. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention because there was an amount of $600 that was tied into that. There's been a lot of trees. And if anybody can remember that last super bad storm we had, and there were trees down Gulfview Sub. I mean, they were everywhere and they were monsters. We were without power, some areas for a minute. I mean, for the north, it was bad. It was really bad. Trees were taken down on city property, the Berwin Center. I think they lost two, but they never put them back. There's no new trees. So if you're going to lump all this in, and with the sycamores, why should these residents who've had these sycamores, they don't want them? They moved there and they were there. So that's kind of like you're punishing them for something they had no choice in. Okay? And I don't think that that's very fair, the $600. If the city planted the tree, the city should pay for replacement. I just, I don't think it's fair. It just seems screwball-y to me. So that was all I had.
$600, I think.
Yeah. There was something, there was something discussed at the last meeting that they were going to bring back the tree replacement for the residents.
Well, so what happened here, if I may? I believe Angela went through this. Had a sycamore tree in front of her home.
Right.
You want to charge her $300 to remove the tree.
Right.
And they wanted to charge an additional $300 to plant a new tree.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't pay for it all, I saw. They, they wanted to charge me $300 or anything, it was...
There was no partnership on that.
They wanted to do it, so you stepped in. And I still paid for the whole thing.
Yeah. So, as of right now, what we discussed about the trees last time was we don't know what trees we're buying, so we're not budget, we're not putting in a budget to purchase trees until we know what trees we're buying.
Right.
That was the, then, you know, I know the DPW director was kind of insinuating, well, you know, if we take down a tree, the residents should pay for, for a new tree. But no, it's always, there's a tree fund that the city always puts up a new tree if it's on a city property.
Well, that hasn't happened. So, what happened to that? I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to hold the resident, this goes for a lot of stuff, right? You're going to hold the residents responsible for anything and the city's not doing it, whether it's grass, trash, trees, buildings, homes, whatever. You've got to have the same, it's got to be the same across the board and it just doesn't, it, it doesn't seem that way.
Council Chair, I thought the only bane that tree is out, they want it down and they want a...
The city will take, the city will take down a diseased tree. If you want your tree removed in front of your home on the city, you have the right to pull a permit and take it down at your own...
Well, my...
Yeah.
Right. And that's, you know, if they're not going to do it on city property, then you can't hold that same rule to a resident.
I mean, and they're supposed to, if they're not following the rules.
There's, there's stumps at Berwin if you want to go take a look.
Oh, I can only imagine.
So, okay, that's all I had.
Council Chair.
Yep.
You know, the sycamores have a certain lifespan and they've already exceeded that. That's why they're spitting bark all over and losing branches. It may not qualify as diseased, but when they're at the end of the life there, there's nothing further for it to grow and have. I mean, we should take a look down sycamore trees like diseased trees.
I think when I asked the, when I asked the administration if we can remove the sycamore trees in the city, I think they told us it was close to like a five or six million dollar project to be able to move down every single sycamore tree. And obviously, we don't have that funding to do. But I'm sure there's a lot of grant money out to it in time. Council Chair.
Yes, sir. I think that we need to relook our tree ordinance. Because it's got, I mean, we had a lot of questionable things going on since we had adopted this new tree ordinance. Now, for one thing, if you don't want a tree in your front yard that's on city property, you could have it cut down. And some of these streets, on my block and a couple blocks over, there used to be tree, used to be a tree-lined street. And now there's no trees. You know, one tree supplies enough oxygen for a family of four.
Yeah.
And...
Kind of brings a lot of shade and...
Blocks, the trees block the wind, which, which keeps the winds down from knocking over power lines and branches on power lines. And I think we really got to really look at this because that was a, that was a free-for-all. Since this new tree ordinance came up, it's a free-for-all, get rid of any tree you want in the city. We, we had designation in the past of Tree City USA. And I think that's, that's not the case anymore.
Well, I, I will tell you, Councilman, if we, if we, let me give an example. If we did not have that tree ordinance today, someone like Angela Van Agus and her mom, seniors who'll go out there and clean up in front of their lawn every day, are going to be forced to not be able to allow that tree to be removed if we don't, if we didn't have this tree ordinance in place. Like if we, I know, like, I'm, I'm someone that wants trees. I like the wilderness. I wa, I want a tree in front of my house. But if a resident chooses at their own expense, they want to take down a city tree and plant it elsewhere, so like if we're taking out a tree in front of their house, the, the ordinance reads, you have to put money into a tree front to either plant it at a park, plant it somewhere else. But there has to be another tree replaced in the city of Dearborn Heights. Now, are they following that rule, Councilman? I don't think so. And I think that's where the issue lies.
Well, that's what, that's why I have to look at the ordinance. Because some trees, you, there's, there's different circumstances, you know, and not just any tree. I mean, sycamore trees, they're, sycamore trees originate from the Middle East. That's where they came from originally. And they, they, they say that Jesus was nailed to a sycamore tree.
Really?
Yeah. But anyway, that's a, that's a, that's an exception. Something like that. I know my neighbor across the street has a sycamore tree. And it's only probably about 20 years old. And it, year-round, it sheds bark, sheds branches all year long.
So what do you, what do you do with that?
They're one of the last trees that lose their leaves and the leaves are this big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That big.
They're massive. Three, two legs.
That's not safe.
I know. You, I mean, you had branches the size of this table.
It was... Year-round, they, they shed.
What's your opinion on it?
Sycamore trees can go. I mean, that's, that's a nuisance, that's, that's, no, that's a nuisance tree, as far as I'm concerned, you know?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Moving to our closed session.
We're going to move.
Yeah, yeah.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman.
I'd like to, that, that the more, uh, that...
Muslim versus Dearborn Heights.
That the Dearborn Heights City Council moved to closed session at 5:44 PM so that the city council may discuss the legal case of Muslim versus Dearborn Heights, which may include the city council, Mayor Bezzi, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Corporation Council, and Carlito Young, Dr. Fusori, Schultz, Jopik, and whatever the name is.
Yes, Amster Bullard appears.
Do I have a second?
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad to discuss Muslim versus Dearborn Heights, seconded by Councilman Saad. Any discussion? Madam clerk, please take your call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Yes. Al-Bijan? Mobaydun?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Nancy Branger?
Yes.
Robert Constance, yes, sir. Denise Malinowski-Maxwell?
Yes.
The Sun-Side?
Yes.
And Tom Winston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six, five. I just want to make sure your names are...
Hey, Tom, I come from Northeast Maine.
Recording stopped.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, will the real councilman once more please stand up? Thank you. My mic is on, everybody turn your mics on. We're not gonna do the budget first.
I'll get it.
We need to go back to office. Council chair. Yup. Councilman Ahmad.
I moved at the Dearborn Heights City Council return to an open session at six twenty-two P M.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. Second by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Goes the polls. The ayes have it, motion carries. Is Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell here? Okay, I'm sorry. Next up.
Council chair, yeah, put the motion, the motion.
I'm gonna have council, you wanna do it or?
I could do it.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Ahmad.
Council chair, I would like that move that the Dearborn Heights City Council go with the recommendation of the legal counsel uh, in the case of Masloom versus Dearborn Heights.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad. Follow the recommendation of our special counsel. Uh, second by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Goes the polls. The ayes have it, motion carries. Alright, next up, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Come on guys, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Goes the polls. Spit my gum out. The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, next, we're going to, we have two options here, and I'm gonna take a poll. Do we want to do the quick police study session? And then go through the school, or do we wanna do the school, then go to the police study session?
Let's do the school, same time.
Please, alright, let's raise your hand if you wanna do the school first. I'm sitting on the council. Raise your hand if you'd like to do the school first. One, two, three, four, five.
Put your hand up.
Okay, well, majority goes, sorry, councilmen that chose not to.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hop to the side.
Sorry about that.
As long as, as long as it don't be done overtime right now, from the city. Chief, go hold this against me, please.
There's something wrong with your charger, you wanna try my charger? Maybe it's your bad charging.
It works.
If I go low, oh, head, I got my name on it.
Alright, since we are gonna start the study session regarding the what with the partnership, I'd like to say with the Crestwood School District and the uh, Warren Valley Golf Course. I wanna be clear to the residents that are at home, and those who are watching. Uh, we do have representation from the Isa Brothers LLC, Matt Schenck is here with us. We do also have Superintendent Dr. Joe Musalem, his builder, his architect. And then, we also have many of the trustees that are also present with us, and former trustees um, that are here with us, present. And so, you're gonna go through a quick presentation, I just wanna kinda recap for any of the council members that were not at this meeting. Um, the, the purpose of this discussion is to find a solution. And, and some solutions may be favorable for others, it may not be favorable for the others. The truth is, you have two options. And from what I, you know, I, I really looked at this and had some conversation with some residents. Uh, the, the two options that it seems like is, you either take a hundred cars off of Warren, or you leave a hundred cars onto Warren. But if you take the cars off of Warren, you're forcing them to all go west onto Warren, which is gonna potentially cause some residents to go through the neighborhoods, through Norbourn and Berwin, and you're gonna get a lot of two-three traffic there. The que, the question is, I know, I know trustee Janoon said, what's the, you know, is it, what's going the additional mile? To save, you know, for, for the sake of safety. And I think almost every single parent at drop-off is gonna be okay with that. I think the issue you're gonna feel is the ones that don't follow the rule, and they're flying through the neighborhood because we're seeing that today. Uh, but this needs to be a partnership. It may be a partnership amongst the community, needs to be a partnership uh, amongst the residents, and it has to be a partnership with this council administration. But I'm gonna leave it to you guys to present, but that's, I feel like, the two options that we had before us here today. And maybe, and we got our police chief here, maybe he could give us some insight and kind of helping out with this, with the flow of traffic. But, Dr. Musalem, I am gonna give you the uh, option to speak here first.
Thank you, um, Council Chair Bedun, City Council.
Hang on one second, Vince, nothing from the audience, please, thank you.
I'm trying to get this to connect, and I'm not being very.
Councilman, Councilman Ahmad is actually very good at it.
Um, so first off, um, if I had no legal counsel would be here, I'd have brought my legal counsel, I just want, I just want, okay. Okay, um, just so that my legal counsel could have been here to answer any questions. So at this point, if there's any questions asked of our district from legal counsel, I will not answer. I will direct that directly to my legal counsel.
Sure.
Just wanna make that clear.
And again, I think ultimately, Dr. Musalem, this is, it looks like the, the two, both the district and the brother, the, the Isa Brothers LLC has a partnership here already.
Yes, no.
I don't think it's like, you know, unless, I mean, we don't even ask question, we don't have a legal counsel here either.
No, we do, we do, but remember, I'm representing the district, I'm not representing Youssef. So I have to make sure whatever is answered, I'm answering in representation to the district. So I don't wanna answer any questions that um, my legal counsel should be the ones answering, I just wanted to make that clear. So, the Isa Brothers and the Crestwood School District and the city of Dearborn Heights, we've had a great partnership. Um, especially when Mr. Isa took over the golf course. Uh, one of the things that he did right away was he said, "You guys can use my parking lot because I know you need it for pickup and drop-off."
I need to also pause you there for a second.
Yes.
I had this conversation with Mr. Isa. City Council was very adamant, very adamant at the time of the, the, you know, the choosing of who's gonna take over the golf course, no matter whom it was. That, that Riverside School continued to use the parking lot. So like, that was affirmative from the beginning. And it was in our agreement, and I believe it's, it might even be in our contract as well. Uh, maybe his special legal counsel, Matt Schenck, can know more about that. I believe it was, it was one of the rules that we specified, saying we wanna make sure Riverside, as long as they're around, they can use that, that parking lot. But, continue.
No, thank you, and I do appreciate City Council, because as I've said multiple times, and I've come in front of the council, is that City Council has been extremely supportive of the school district, and I know they're extremely supportive of all the school districts in the city, so I do appreciate your support.
Respectfully too, the mayor also did say he wanted that as well, so we, I do wanna recognize Mayor Bill Bazey for saying that as well, cuz he did.
So, and I appreciate everyone, all city government officials. So until this pops up, um, I'll just talk through a few things.
Keep staying down, open up the click, shared drive, and start the software application.
So, the idea through this partnership is, in order for us as a school district to use uh, district funds, we have to have a sublease or a lease with the property that we do not own in order for us to use district funds to uh, redo the pavement, to uh, create a thorough way in between the two properties because we will be impacting not only our district's property, but we'll also be impacting the city's property or the uh, Warren Valley uh, parking lot. Um, as Council Chair Bedun, as you mentioned, you are right. There are two options on the table right now, and those two options are, you know, we can continue status quo, or, and we'll have continued seventy-five cars, four fifty, seventy-five cars lined up on Warren Avenue, uh, especially during dismissal time. Um, or we can pull those cars, seventy-five to a hundred cars, up into the loop, which would start at Riverside Middle School through the Warren Valley parking lot, where students would have more space and to be dropped off, to be picked up. Um, and it will create a much smoother traffic flow, not only for Warren and Beach Daily, but also for the school, but more, but also it'll eliminate the congestion that occurs at Warren Valley's entry and exit area currently. Through this process, there are, you know, some things that we have been in conversation with the county on in reference to the timing of the lights on Warren Avenue, in reference to a left turn signal um, uh, on Berwin, um, as well as, you know, looking at different uh, lighting configurations to make this work to the best ability we can. There is no perfect solution. Um, there is no silver bullet. Um, as I had mentioned in the last city council meeting, our schools were built um, in the nineteen-sixties, which they weren't built to have, you know, one to two hundred cars uh, dropping students off and picking students up. Uh, they were built more for students to walk to school. And, one of the things that if you look at districts that are being built in cities, you'll notice that they, when they build a school, they have a large piece of land, they'll push that school as far back as they can on that piece of land. They'll connect the main roads to a dry, to a thorough so that you don't have that backup on the main roads. Dearborn Heights, all of our schools, you know, not just Crestwood, but you know, D-Savin, Robisham, all of them, were all landlocked, and it creates these traffic issues. Uh, part of our commitment when we move forward with our bond was to do whatever we could to alleviate the traffic on Warren and Beach Daily uh, for the safety of the students, as well as for reduction of congestion of traffic. Um, and, you know, I, I know that, you know, there, there, there's a lot of opportunity here where we can continue to work together to make this work, and I, and I know Mr. Isa wants to make it work, and I know City Council and the mayor's office wanna make it work. We wanna make it work, and our goal here during this study session is if you have any questions, or you'd like to any clarification on, you know, different things that were brought up from the last city council meeting, we have our uh, construction team, as well as a team from uh, Crestwood to answer any like, technical questions as well.
I'm just kinda thinking out loud. Is there any way possible, maybe the builders and engineers can figure this out? You can some way allow the approach, I know we're kinda forcing everybody right. Is there an option for it to go either left or right?
How's this any different than, than Crestwood High School? Crestwood High School, you're only forced to go right when you exit.
You're, but, but you have Wilson that has a stoplight that allows you to turn left.
They don't, they have a sign there, uh, across the street that says, does not allow you to go through. Um, yeah, so, I mean, like, me personally, I do, when I exit, I do make the right-hand turn. I do go down Wilson, make my U-turn, and then come back out. So I am driving through the neighborhood.
Yeah, so you're gonna have that.
You're gonna have that regardless.
And you know what else is, this is like, I'm thinking from a safety concern. What you're gonna have is, people that live on Berwin, I should say, I live on Berwin. Moby Dun, hypothetically speaking, lives on Berwin. He's got a son, Haliya Medina, that play outside. And between the hours of three and, you know, two, but by the time of release, you have all these people speeding in and out of the queue there. It's gonna happen, and then they're gonna go, they're gonna go down Berwin, and they're gonna make a left on Haas, and they're gonna get back onto Beach Daily, and they're gonna go down Beach Daily, and they're gonna make a right onto Warren.
Well, we cannot control the traffic because it's making that right-hand turn. That, that's something that we can't control. Um, you know, there's a lot of other school districts that dictate, you know, right-hand turns only and left-hand.
I agree, I, I mean, and the safer route, by the way, the ultimate safe route is to always force people to go right. To do the left, and people coming west, and you're trying to force people to go left without a traffic light, is, is just a chaos.
You're gonna create another traffic light at a new approach, and that's, I don't think that's something that anybody wants to understand.
So, the reason why we were saying to push everybody right, and I get where you're coming from, Council Chair, to, if we have an option to go left or right, the problem with going left and right is you would have to have somebody stationed, literally directing traffic the entire time. Stopping cars from coming and going, and you'd have to add another light over there, which could create more congestion.
Let me ask you this, what if we got a light that sits on the exit, and, and it's green and red, you know, but obviously it's a light, and when it stops, it stops people on traffic on Beach Daily, or I'm sorry, on Warren, and it allows you to turn, and we can maybe discuss with the county, that way now, I mean, this is just an option, yeah. You know, and, and maybe, you know, this can continue, but eventually we find a way to get Wayne County to support us. And I think if we come together and ask Wayne County, "Please, put us, put us a traffic light right here," and allow the district to control it. And so that you guys control the red and, you know, or, or the police department, on, on drop-off and pickup. This light will now allow you to be able to go, because it's, now it's, it's greed for the people leaving the parking lot. Then you can, you know, it can go back to red for the people in the parking lot, and allow the traffic to flow through, and then go back, and now this allows it. Look guys, we have to find the solution, you're right. But the solution also, to me, I'm just thinking, is it to send cars down Berwin?
Council chair.
But I think this is a solution, and I don't know how it just registered in my mind, but it's.
So I could, if I may, we did have that conversation, our concern is the light on Beach Daily and Warren. Where if that light is not timed exactly with that turning light that you would add, you'll be creating another bottleneck.
On Beach Daily what?
Uh, Beach Daily and Warren, you'll be creating another bottleneck for people going left. Because now you'll have cars stopped at that, which will back everybody else up. So that's why.
You're right, right.
You know, so I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's tough.
I feel really the only way to solve the can, traffic in that area would honestly be a roundabout. I don't think we have the money for it.
I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
A roundabout, uh, that area.
We don't, we don't have the mo, the funds or.
We don't keep traffic flowing on all directions.
I'm sorry, can, can, can I connect mine for one second?
Oh, yeah, I don't, anything I should do?
Uh, just, uh, take it, unplug it.
Okay.
Especially.
No, no, I, Councilman Ahmad has his own.
Yeah. I don't know where his show and go.
It was a minute, just. Is yours plugged in still?
No. I mean, I can minimize it with that, it'll work.
IT is not the greatest thing. Thomas, are those new glasses?
Okay, now, and also showing, see, this is the same thing I discussed last time, like, uh, if you go through that parking lot and you go, you make like a drive-through, I know it's gonna take some of the parking lot, parking spots and teachers' parking lot. If you go through here like, like a one-car drive-through, all the way, make sure like, it's like a drive-through, they cannot exit, and then they can go all the way and exit on Beach Daily. So this way, they have the right to make a right on Beach Daily, then they can go wherever they wanna go. Is that a possibility?
Or they have to go to Joy Road. You, you can't go left.
That's gonna hold up people if you wait for people to turn left.
What about, you have a huge part of the district that still lives off of Precinct One, which is Joy Road area off of, uh, Beach Daily. Or what if they wanna go where, where, where.
Now, plus we have two options, one, they can only make right on Warren. Whoever, whoever's going that way, or they can take that drive-through and exit on Beach Daily.
But you can because of the bus draw, there's a bus draw. The buses are coming out there too.
Yeah, from the teachers' parking spot.
So, that parking area over there is, is our bus loop area, because that's the only area that can actually handle our buses to make a.
Okay, that's a different story. Okay, I have one question for you, leave this open for a second. Let you say I'm a parent. Let you say I'm a parent. I come inside, we're, we're gonna be coming in from here, right? You see with this, uh, can you just see it? Okay, do you see the hand?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, oh, you. This, this Australia. I'm a parent, here's the school.
And car comes in, supposed to take them all the way over, right?
Correct.
What do you, how are we gonna control the parent that comes in? That's good, over the door and just walks off.
Staff. And this will, and that's what we currently do. Right now, our staff already controls the traffic, and our, we have our security team. We have our security team who works that parking area. And then we have our administrators, and some of our staff will work the other parking lot area to make sure cars keep moving. Currently, we have a decent flow, because people have adjusted to our expectations. That's why when you drive by, you see all those horses.
Begin to the mic.
That's why when you drive by, you see all those horses, and we leave them, then we put them up, and people aren't following that routine, they really are. Administration was here, but they had to leave. Um, and what we would do is we would have to condition the, the community on this new process and this new route. I will tell you, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of our parents will follow through. They do. Yeah, you have your three, five percent that don't, but that's where our team comes in, and that's where our team explains the process. And, you know, the first, you know, if we were to move forward with this, yes, the first two, three weeks, we'd have to like be out there in double force, making sure everybody understands, but that would be a continuation of process. And honestly, like I said, ninety-five percent of our parents, they, they come through, they, they do what needs to be done, because it comes down to the safety of the children.
For sure. Question. Um, right now, do you just come in on the east driveway and walk on the west driveway? Where do you, where do you?
So, right now, we're coming in from the Warren Valley parking lot. We don't, we use our parking lot as a small loop, but that only fits maybe fifteen cars, if that, for a small loop. And then the larger loop is, they come in currently from the Warren Valley parking lot. They loop around in the quadrant that we're requesting the sublease, and then they come out, they exit out of the Warren Valley parking lot. The problem with that is, number one, we still have a backup of cars, of at least fifty cars on Warren Avenue, back to Beach Daily and beyond at times. And the second problem is, we're taking away from Mr. Issa's business during golf season, because his, um, he, he, the golfers and those that are coming can't get in, they're stuck in that traffic, so they're late to tee times. And, you know, that's, it's not fair for Mr. Issa and his team, as, you know, so we're trying to find a way to resolve this, where we can support Mr. Issa, and at the same time, we can create a situation where we're pulling at least a hundred cars off of Warren Avenue.
I can tell you that when I drive through Warren, it's so annoying, uh, when, when, when you guys are, uh, it's, it's the worst experience. Um, Crestwood is much better.
Yeah.
You know? Kenlock and Riverside, wow, do I hate those.
And, and here's, here's the irony. Crestwood is better for one of the reasons is because a lot of the people, there are just students that are driving. So you might be like, stu, but they're not parents pulling up, picking up their kids and pulling out. They're getting in their car, and they're going.
Unless they have different time of dismissal.
Correct. Riverside, you have twelve hundred kids being dismissed at the same time. And that's, it's a logistical issue.
And it's wanting to get bigger.
I hope so, God willing.
I, I, I was there a couple of times, I couldn't sit around all the time. It was like, look, like people are doing different things, you know, they almost found a specific pattern. Can you show the people at home exactly what you plan on doing with this? Like, I've got calls about it.
I can't, I gotta plug back in.
Yeah, go ahead. You guys have this at your place?
This? No. We, 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 uh, have a direct plugin, we don't do the, uh, the way. For that reason.
No, we also didn't get a hundred twenty million dollar bond.
Well, no, this was about the bond.
I know, I.
Hey, that was through cost-effective analysis.
I like that. My bad.
Okay, so I think I'm good.
I, I pick on you once in a while.
Please, pick on me whenever you want, it's fine.
Mr. Shank, while you're here and he's figuring this out, where he can answer the question. Oh, never mind, go ahead, you got it.
So the proposed plan, real quick, so.
Hey, pray.
As, as we look at this, you see the blue-lined out areas, the area we're requesting the sublease. That area requesting the sublease will allow us to move away from using, uh, Mr. Issa's entry and exit area.
You wanna stand up and go there, hit the mic?
Sure.
Unplug the mic, yep.
Now I feel like the superstar.
You are a superstar.
I mean, you're a superstar.
I need a pointer.
I know, you know what, I forgot it today, I had it last time. So this area here is where we're requesting to have the sublease. This area here is our current, this is, this is our property. Currently, our, we use two loops, we have a short loop here, which, this is like, I guess, that ten, fifteen cars. And then we bring cars in here, and they loop here, they get, kids get picked up and dropped off here, and they come out. But this is where the congestion happens, and then we have a backup on Warren. Now, the backup is vast, is more during dismissal than arrival, because again, you have everyone leaving at the same time. Can you click to the next slide?
Hit, hit the arrow right.
Okay. So the idea is, oh, actually, go one more, because this is just going over. What is that? This is, this, this is what's currently happening, this is the plan. Currently, cars are lined up on Warren, congestion for the golf course. Cars come through, pickup and drop-off is here, cars come out and they exit. Now, when the cars exit here, we got a problem. Some cars go left, some cars go right. The problem we face with the cars going left is the safety of the kids, as the kids are trying to cross the street over there. The pro, and then the people that go right, a lot of them don't want to go left, because they gotta wait for the kids to cross, and now you have double congestion. The cars that go right, they go down Berwyn. These cars are already going down Berwyn. And I will tell you, I've spoken to the neighbors on Berwyn who know me personally, who have called me, and they did bring up that concern too. Our suggested plan is, if we're able to sublease this area, we will be redoing the entire paving over in this area. This area here.
Or the whole place.
This area here. Man, I wish it was my personal pocketbook, but.
We're not negotiating, we're not done negotiating.
This area here is where we have to create two thoroughways. A thoroughway here and a thoroughway here. Both thoroughways will have a gate, so that it can lock up, but Mr. Issa will have a key to that gate, because in the agreement, it's a reciprocal agreement, where when school is closed, he can use our parking lot as well, if he has, if he needs overflow. In the sublease area here, he will have complete access to it at all times. With this new plan, we come in, which that top arrow there is our current Riverside Middle School entry. Cars will loop all the way around here. Students will be picked up and dropped off, so a drop-off can be over here, but pickup will be on this side. And the reason for this, like I said, pickup is when you have the most cars you have to get off of Warren. This will get us up to a hundred cars, if not more, off of Warren Avenue. Currently, we're only getting maybe fifty cars total off of Warren Avenue, if that. Now, where the next piece comes in is they loop, and then they come back through to our parking lot, and they exit our exit. So no longer are we bottlenecking or creating congestion.
Stop them though from just.
We'll, we'll have barriers, we'll have those, uh, movable barriers, just like we currently have, you know, you see those horses, like I was saying? We'll just put those horses over there, so they can't go through. It's the same thing over here, where we will, if we're gonna have everybody turn right, when they come out, they're not gonna be able to go left, they're gonna have to follow through and follow while going left.
That driveway is gonna get redone, that approach.
Over here?
So it's gonna be a, yeah, it's gonna be a right turn only, right?
It's gonna be a right turn only, correct. That's the idea. The reason why we're saying we didn't want to go left turn as well is because then you're gonna have a double bottleneck over at Beach Daily and Warren intersection. So, again, the red dots is currently what we have. The green arrow is what the plan is.
And it's ultimately the same thing.
The difference is, we're gonna get up to a hundred cars off of the road.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm seeing, you're already using this process, we're just getting things away from, uh, the golf course. Yes, you said, you wanna say something? Can you take the mic?
Which I don't mind is, but when I open up for business, I'm pretty sure, hopefully, we get busy there and stuff. I mean, like, the parents come prior, like an hour prior to school, before school bell rings. They park their cars there, so the whole parking lot is full of cars. Now, when they're exiting out, they're using the other two as well. So when they're getting out, they're like, you know, they're lined up from like the building all the way through. So when the cars are coming through, they're blocking people off. So like, they don't have the respect, like, to stop and then go through, so they block like people trying to get in and out. This was like our biggest problem. I don't mind them using the parking lot, I don't mind them, whatever, you know, it's okay. Just the problem is getting in and out is our problem. So I don't know if that's even gonna, I mean, that's gonna help, but what can, what's gonna stop them from coming an hour early and use, and parking throughout the whole parking lot, till the kids get out of school?
That's, I, that would be on, yeah.
Yeah, but who's gonna stop them? But who's gonna stop?
And, and you know, I mean, really, I think to, I think through great communication, you can say things like, you know, this is an immediate request.
The guy at the bed, oh, you can't, but.
No, no, immediate request.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, for school, the school board's gotta tell them, listen, you cannot, this is, this is your only way in and out is from here. Cannot use park there, you guys can't just.
Officer ticketing.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, is this, this proposed area to sublease, is that cut off from the rest of the parking lot? Does, what's, what's gonna keep someone from just getting out of that area and going back to the golf course entrance?
So we're, we're gonna be blocking off all ex, all other entryways by movable objects that we can place and remove. Um, so you can put them all the way down that, that north side. So currently, you already have a natural beam here.
Yeah, the berm, yeah.
So you would put, uh, barrier here.
Okay.
And then a barrier along here.
But those are not like to stay, they're not like.
No, they're, they're movable, they're temporary. Look, at, at the end of the day, there's, you know, a couple of things we can do, I mean, these, these two entry and exit areas currently have gates. Those gates are closed during certain times, those gates can remain closed until twenty minutes before dismissal. I mean, those are things that we can do. Um, and the other part behind it is, this area in here is also gonna be, uh, staff parking. So if you got staff parked in there, there's, you're only gonna have room for the loop, because staff needs parking. So, because our whole idea with this area here is we're gonna open this up for visitor parking. Ultimately, at the end of the day, and, you know.
That's not a big parking lot, by the way.
No, it's not, it's not.
We used it for six.
So, al- ultimately, at the end of the day, that, you know, representing the district, the reason why, you know, we've brought this is because we're trying to find a solution to a problem that was brought to my attention back in two thousand nineteen. By community, by, by council, by the mayor's office, by the police department, and to this day, people talking about the safety of that corner.
You plan on having only pickup in that one area?
Correct.
So what, what's gonna keep someone from jumping into a car when they're in the stacking, stacking?
So that's something that we have to work with. Look, there's a lot of things that we're gonna do everything we can to control, I, we don't have an answer for all that, other than we're gonna continue to pressure that this is what we need, this is how it needs to be done. Uh, we're gonna work with Dearborn Heights Police, our SO role has been doing a great job with this thus far. People, people are being ticketed that are not following, you know, the, the traffic laws and the rules, and at the end of the day, I can tell you this. Even if we created what everybody would consider a perfect system, we're still gonna have those issues. We're, we're gonna cross the kids over two lanes of traffic to get to that area. So right here, what will end up happening is, we will have a crosswalk, which will be manned by our security team.
It'll be, it'll be a crosswalk, correct?
Yeah.
So on, on rainy day, I'm just being devil's eye, on rainy days, the kids are, you're, you're, I'm not saying forced, but you're gonna have them stand out there in the rain to wait to be picked up?
Well, when it rains, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be, look, like I said, th- there's no perfect answer. The, the thing is, no matter where you go, whatever school district you attend, there are gonna be variables that people are gonna have to adjust to. Weather, rain, so on so forth, it's just the reality of it. And what we're trying to do, look, at the end of the day, if this is approved and we move forward with it, we're gonna make it work the best of our ability. If at the end of the day, it's not approved and we don't move forward with it, we're gonna continue with what we're doing, and we're gonna try to make it as good as we can. Ultimately, we're just bringing the best-case scenario that we and the architectural team and the engineering team has come up with, and it's trying to put our best foot forward and finding a solution to a problem that's been in place for a long time.
I would ask, I would ask, he makes a very good point. If this is approved, it should say something in it that we can build where kids can si, stand under if it's snowing or raining. Maybe right there on the easement. If we can put something where kids can, you know.
You're talking as if like a canopy?
Like a, like a, yeah, like it can even be.
A bus stop thing.
A bus stop.
Yeah. Something that, if it's raining or snowing, you wanna make sure that, I mean, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Issa's okay with that. But then again, you don't want people to be, start standing under there and hanging out under there and.
It's not gonna solve the problem.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, it can probably fifty percent solve, which, which is okay. My main concern is, just don't block the empty, don't block me, it's like walking in and out, that's it. Put me there, use the parking, I'll do it.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
At the same time, council chair, you talk to twelve hundred students, you're not gonna be able to have twelve hundred students under the canopy, so. So I would.
I'm poor, I shouldn't suggest that, right? Well, right now, they are, yes, they are, actually, you have, you are right, right now, they are walking out in the rain and stuff, because they're still getting picked up in that parking lot, there's no difference. It's, still, that's what it is. Now, I saw Jake, which I appreciate, he was taking those notes down, and he wrote down, is that what you said? So that they can go back and they can look at that and see if that's a design, something they can do, and we were taught. We're not closing the door on anything. You know, we're, we're willing to look at whatever's worked, because, and again, I want to reiterate, we're just trying to figure out what's gonna be best for the kids and the community, and, you know, and what's gonna help Mr. Issa, so we don't interrupt his business. Um, and ultimately, you know, we're, we're here, again, just saying, this is what we think is best, it is not perfect. The perfect scenario, you don't wanna know what a perfect scenario is, because a perfect scenario is gonna cost a lot of money. You're cool. Yeah, you're talking about almost two hundred million dollars in a perfect scenario. Okay? And I think one of the things too, is a lot of times people in the community don't understand that how much it costs to build schools. A brand-new high school, if you're gonna do a top-tier, like, top-line high school, and I would assume you'd want to, you're looking at a hundred and eighty to almost two hundred million. A middle school, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty million. And a elementary, you're looking at anywhere from sixty to seventy-five million. This is why, and, and, you know, the state of Michigan just did a major infrastructure review of all schools. And I can share that report with any city council member if they want, and it shows like how bad the infrastructure is currently in our state. Because, again, you go back to it, schools are built, they're maintained, but we're at a very static allotment of funds, where there's only so much we can do.
Yeah, have you explored the option of, uh, separate dismissal times?
The problem we have with that, with separate dismissal times, is you have parents who have kids in the high school, elementary, and the middle school. So if you add another dismissal time, you're, you, you're creating more of a havoc for parents. And then we also have busing. Buses are on a schedule based on levels.
Look, the way I look at this is, how about busing the kids over to Crestwood, then pick them up there?
Well, what ends up happening, I love that, but what ends up happening is we just take the problem moving.
Yeah, I like this kid, Dave.
Yeah, no, I know, but.
Look, I think ultimately, the, the, there isn't, there isn't a perfect solution. The truth is, th- this is helping out the golf course. The, the district is doing its studies, they're paying for it, they're already doing this. So, I, I don't, I don't really see much, but I would like to hear from, uh, Mr. Shank, who's the attorney, about regarding, I know some concerns were brought up. Does this in any way, shape, or form affect the liquor license that is currently at the other property? If so, what are your thoughts? I mean, we wanna make sure that, I know you represent the Issa brothers. We, we wanna know, or maybe if we got, is Gary on? Uh, just to hear about.
No, we're, we're happy to work with the school district to help solve this problem.
I know, so will it affect it in each way, shape, or form if we sublease this parking, you know, because that's what, 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 what our, what the mayor's attorney told us.
It has the potential to impact the liquor license. So we're gonna talk to the district's attorney tomorrow and see if we can find some solution that allows it to coexist. But still allows them to use their grand money.
Okay, I mean, obviously, that's, I mean, that's. Obviously, that's, I mean, that's, you know, that's a big piece of the puzzle right there. At least for me, I mean, it's like, can't take that away. And I know that there's something with school districts and liquor license. So we wanna make sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's on that.
Correct.
Yep.
Council chair, maybe you can answer a question. Um, as far as liability, um, are you gonna have double liability? I mean, who's liable for that space during? You know, uh, so if some golfers come in on the weekend and get in a fight and someone gets killed, the school is, is responsible for that?
We hold liability on that.
Total liability. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
And really, the liability wouldn't even fall on the Issa Brothers, it would fall on the city. If somebody, if something happened to somebody on.
That's what I'm saying, anybody who's done. Well, then why is it different with this then?
Well, because now we're negotiating this contract now. What happened here, we're telling him, you have to have that insurance.
Maybe this contract should be between the school district and the city of Dearborn Heights, son.
It is.
I mean, instead of Issa Brothers.
And.
They're fine. It's, it's a part way, that's why we're all in here.
It's a three-way.
A three-party agreement.
The way the contract is written currently is we are receiving permission from the city of Dearborn Heights, heights to sublease from the Issa Brothers allowance. And when the, the city gives the permission, we would then go to our board, our board who then vote on it.
If the city was to get permission for us to sublease from Mr. Issa, then we'd have to go to my school board, my school board would have to vote on it, and then it would have to be finally approved by Mr. Issa. And that's why our attorney is gonna contact Mr. Issa's attorney first thing tomorrow and work out some details as needed.
Any other questions from council members? President.
Councilman, uh, Chair, I just wanted to add, just cause I wanna make sure this is clear. Whatever contract the city council would approve in order, cause you ultimately, the city council can ultimately say, we're not allowing you to sublease from the Issa Brothers. You have that authority. Because I just wanna make sure the community. Uh, because I, someone had mentioned, I heard someone just mentioned that the city should be the ones that do it. What will happen is whatever city council sees is what would go to my board, which is what would go to Mr. Issa. It would not be any different. It would be the exact same verbiage and everything. And that is why it's imperative that, um, our attorneys from Trun, uh, speak with the Issa Brothers attorneys as soon as possible to look at that language before we bring it back to the city council.
And I would want something very specific, bold, uh, one, making sure about the liquor license. Insurance of being, you know, you know, maintained. I'm talking like, no, um, we, I mean, we wanna do the whole parking lot.
You know, and then maybe, maybe we can also discuss potential like, hey, we're, we're getting, you know, I, look, I'm gonna be honest. This is a great, this is a great win for the district, this is a great win for the city, this is a great win for the Issa Brothers. I think the city can ultimately come back and still say, hey, what you're doing in the parking lot, might as well do the rest of the parking lot.
There's your president saying no.
So I could just say this. First off, my board, again, I'm not speaking for Yusef, I'm speaking on behalf of the district. Um, ultimately, anything would have to come in front of our, my board, my board would have to approve. But you have to also keep in mind, not just bond money, but any fiduciary monies from the school district cannot be spent on property that we don't own or we don't at least lease or something.
And so is that parking lot?
All right, we can lease you the whole parking lot.
And extend it.
That's it. I don't know if the, I'm so sure, Chief, do you have anything to add or everything? I'm waiting to the party.
Not, it's not a stalking point.
I'm a strong point.
And I, and I do, I, I wanna, I do wanna give credit to the Dearborn Heights Police Department and, and the chief. They have really been extremely, extremely resourceful and helpful, uh, uh, over, uh, all of our, all of our areas. Councilman Brian?
My only concern is that the two leases, the lease to Mr. Issa and yours run contiguous the same amount of time. I don't like the fifty years at all.
So I, it wasn't one of my slides, cause I remember, uh, Councilman Constance brought that up. It wasn't one of the slides. I've reached out to our attorneys to look at, what are some different things we can do in terms of the, the lease terms? Uh, knowing that fifty years is not an option for the city council.
Right.
So, um, we're waiting for some, we, he's looking into some things and then we'll get back with city council on where we can make that adjustment.
And ten-year, ten-year renewal. Any other questions before I take it to the public? I will say, for me, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, if you did a hundred-year lease, I think as long as there's a school there and there's a parking lot, we should be able to make it and then be allowed and accessible to, to our residents. These are our residents at the end of the day. These students are our residents and they're our future. And so to me, it's like, I want this to stay a school. I would love for this to, I want this to stay a parking lot. And hopefully there's a continued related, you know, relationship. But I can also concede the concerns of the, of the councilman in the sense that, what if in twenty years, Mr. Issa's like, I don't want nothing to do with this place, something else happened? I can also see where she says like, we don't want that to be the pivotal point for whatever happens to us in the future.
I totally understand that. Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna take it out to Zoom first before we open it up to anybody in the audience. So if you have any questions or concerns and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will take it over to public comments in person. We have three minutes. We state your name, city you reside in, street that you live on, hang on one second. Sure, our nineteen-minute hangage is off. Nineteen seventy-nine. Well, Joe, this is, this is from Bob Constance. Can we, can we put one in the contract too?
I'll buy out of my personal account for the.
Sarge Orvaz. It's actually not even worth it. Mr. President, wow, it might have reached this. It's like a kitchen turn, right? No, no, it's on. Is this a part of my three minutes or you?
You're at two minutes now.
I mean, we, we can mark you that way. Go ahead. I'm just, I won't, I won't need three minutes. First of all, thank you for consideration, Mr. Issa. Um, we go back a long way personally, professionally and every other way. You. Yeah, that's actually a good point to, Mo Sabal, I am the school board president for Crestwood Schools. I'm also a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights. I live on Evangeline, a longtime resident. And, um, there's three things that I think every city needs to consider first and foremost, the safety of, of the children, which is always number one to me, regardless of what it is that we're looking at, the safety of the general public. And third and foremost, obviously, the ease of, um, our businesses, the ability for our businesses to handle their business. And I think this is, there is no silver bullet. There is no perfect answer. There is no hidden two hundred million dollars sitting aside that we can knock all this down and rebuild it. It's impossible. Um, you know, the old saying says insanity is, you know, those that continuously do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. Nothing is going to change if we leave it, leave it as is. This gentleman's put a lot of money into the facility over there. I mean, if, all you have to do is drive by it. I haven't been in. But I can tell that there's a lot of investment going into the facility. And his investment should be protected. And this is my fourth child at Riverside, my youngest. Thank God he's in eighth grade. I don't have to go back there anymore after this. I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's a disaster in the morning, it's a disaster in the afternoon. Uh, I drove by this afternoon, he took the bus home. They were crossing kids and the, the cars were literally backed up into Beach Daily as students were crossing. It's a scary sight. It really is. It's something that we have to take action on. Leaving it the way it is is not an option because the first child that gets hurt, not that, well, thank God, nobody's ever gotten hurt, nobody ever will. But the continuum of having all these cars backed up onto a major roadway is not good. And shutting off this gentleman's business is not good. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Lori Moline, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights. I have a question looking at the map and maybe the Issa Brothers can answer this for me. You have a separated by a median entrance to your golf course. Now, what I see happening at this, if this was to go through, what's gonna happen is we're gonna start to have a backup on the center turn lane onto Berwin. So everybody's heading west, they need to get back into the neighborhood and they're gonna start backing up in that center turn lane. Yes, a left turn light would help, but they can't turn on Norborn, that's in the left. They can't turn on, on Centralia, that's too far east. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna turn into, they're gonna say, I'm not gonna go in that left turn lane. Look at, there's fifteen cars. I'm gonna just jut into the golf course, take, go past the first median, loop back around and use that light to go left or right. Now I can go any way I wanna go. But if you block that off, and I know that's a parking lot for the golfers, but if you block that and made it more of a median further towards the entrance of the golf, the building, then you're gonna eliminate that kind of traffic. Do you see what I'm saying? Well, if you, if you block that median up so that your more westerly parking lot, they have to go further in to get to it. Right. So that's what I see parents doing. And the other problem is the fire station. Okay? There's no decision on the fire station yet. And Warren Avenue was one of the decisions. So what happens if we do that? And what happens if there's a fire station? Yeah. That's not gonna change what's already happening now, okay? But now you're putting in a left turn light. It, I just, I think if you made that middle median at the entrance more filled in.
So they can do a future that would never solve the issue.
Oh, yeah. Because what they were doing in the past, because they couldn't get down Berwin, there's a business on the corner of Berwin and Warren. They were using that alley to get back into the neighborhood. The traffic was insane.
Both that are watching, same.
Close that up. Yep, close it up. Yep, it's gonna slow them down. And I get that you wanna use your westerly parking lot. And I get that that's a slight inconvenience for the golfers. But considering the size of that back parking lot, everybody's gonna be wanting to be closest to the building and utilize that one anyway. This, the most southern end of that, northern, northern.
But that's.
There are barricades.
I, I mean, it's, it's a lot prettier than a barricade, right?
Yeah, well, it's a banquet, it's gonna be hard. When it's a banquet, it's gonna be hard. Like, if you have valet, then they have to exit on, on, on Warren, then come back in. It's gonna be tough.
Not if you have an entrance from the top of the, uh, the top of the driveway.
Yeah.
He's saying at the top, you can still allow to do it.
Okay.
First two.
Exactly. I, I mean, everybody's out for themselves and trying to get where they need to go. They don't care about anybody else.
I agree.
Right.
Then it's forcing them to, why they come in here?
Okay.
So you're talking those three patches of berm?
Close them up. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You wanna close them off, wanna make it one.
Got it.
Do that for grass and sod and.
Got it.
Maybe beautify it for the golfers.
Well, I'm sure they would wanna do that anyway. They, you know.
Couple of stick more trees?
Or we can find some, her trees.
You do a man, you do a man, the city you reside in, the street that you live on?
Sukaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. So regardless of what happens, the school's not going away, the kids aren't going away. The fire station may or may not be there. Traffic is a, hmm, regardless, and it's not gonna get better. This solution would, A, help the golf course by paving part of it at the school board's expense. It would take some of the traffic off of Warren. Is it still gonna affect Berwin? Yes. Is it gonna affect my subdivision in Golfy Manor? Sure. Is there any other solution? It's been years, guys. There's no other solution. Trying to get the gate between Warren Valley and the school district was so hard, you wouldn't even believe it. Now we have people working together to get a least bad solution. And I don't see anything else. I'm happy that the school district and the city and the police and the city council are working together. That was not always the case. Again, the kids aren't going away. So whether it be a fifty-year contract or a five-year contract, first off, as an ex-school board member, I'm not approving a five-year contract and putting in tons of money to pave that. So you've gotta work together a little bit. And again, no great solution. This is less bad. Thank you.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
You know, I've, 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 uh, I've stressed school district, working along with the city for a long time. And in the past, I said, basically, the only thing the city does for a school district is plows the snow around the school. I mean, we don't even pick up their trash or, you know, that can be worked on. And, you know, dialogue between the school district and city is so important. We had, just had an issue in D seven where a city hired contractor came in on school board property without even notifying the school board, set up a staging area.
Or the city council.
Or anybody. And, you know, and that, that's what we need to, we need to get away from that. We need to get, you know, the communication wide open, work, this is a good start, working together. A project like this, especially where the city, I mean, it's not costing us a penny. You know, and we're getting something really cool out of it. We're getting all kinds of, it's probably gonna, uh, free us up some police officers, hopefully. Um, any kind, any, any, any kind of access with children, uh, it's gonna solve a problem for a long time to come. And this is what we, this is what I've been working for, you know, the city, working with our school district, because you can't have one without the other.
How you doing, ma'am? Uh, please state your name, the city you reside in. If you can get your name, you've got three minutes.
Renee Murnau. I live on Indianapolis, Dearborn Heights. So, did you miss me? I've been gone for a while. I was on Zoom a couple of times. I'm not doing that anymore cause I fell asleep, so I'm not good. So, uh, one thing is I'm really glad to see that you guys stole my thunder cause all the notes that I wrote to bring up here, you guys addressed them already about liability and also, um, how to pave certain areas and also staggering the school dismissal times. But I caught one. I got one left that you guys didn't get. So, you know, that new route, hey, I agree a hundred percent, that looks good. The problem is, when you get a parent whose kid is lagging back in school and they're in a single file line and they're parked there waiting for their kid to catch up to the car, holding everybody up, what's to, what's to stop them from just stopping and waiting for their kid to come out? And, and then, I'm sorry, but it's like a black hole. If they get in there, it's sort of like a drive-through to a restaurant. You're, there's no way out, you know?
So it doesn't show it in this. It'll be a two-lane system. The first lane closest to the curb will be the parking area. So you have to pull all the way around, you park, you wait for your child to come out.
Okay.
The second lane will be the through lane. So when, when your child comes out, you're already parked, you're in between cars already. Child comes to the car, you pull out into the through lane, you go through the through lane to exit. So there'll be two lanes and they'll be separated so that it won't be interfering with traffic that is waiting and traffic that is waiting to leave.
Okay. And that, and is there some plan to keep them from even that second lane stopping and waiting for their child? I mean, you see it at the airport. I, I, that's the only visual I had in mind. You see it at the airport, people stop where they wanna stop. And it's like, how dare you tell me not to stop here because my kid goes here or whatever, their, their, whatever their reasoning is. So what's, what keeps them from stopping in any of the lanes?
So, again, it comes back to ninety-five percent of our community, ninety-five percent of our parents do follow our requi- requested guidelines.
Yeah.
We just have to be diligent and continuously help the other five percent remember what those expectations are. And that's really the breast of it. And, you know, through constant communication, to, you know, constant conversations. And I will tell the council, as, as an educator, the best, the best people to help the parents stay within the guidelines are their children. And we see that, that the children will tell mom or dad, well, you go, no, you gotta move over. And we see it all the time. So we have to educate and continue to educate and continue to help them understand. And I truly believe that over time it becomes conditioned. You know, and that, that's our goal.
And then also, you know, plus a visual aid, maybe if they do that, you know, one of the people, the gar- the guards or whoever, if they're standing by, you know, they hand them a Bad Boy or Bad Girl sticker. And if they get one, the kid gets embarrassed, cause they got a Bad Boy or Bad Girl sticker. The parents got one. Anyway, silly idea, but sometimes it works, you know? That's it. Thank you.
I do.
Thanks, Renee.
Maybe this, this could be in the agreement. But I, when I go past by like some of the middle schools and elementary schools, I know every three, four years, you guys budget a restribe. Because this is such a long process, I would. Because this is such a long process, I would ask that it's a yearly re-stripe. Uh, where it says only out, there's, because what we don't want it to do is fade and be like, oh, you know, when Joe Mosson was here, he used to do it. No, there's a contract that says you have to do.
So we, we can add that to the contract?
I would.
Yeah, and, um, what, what we do is each year within our budget, um, we set aside specific amount of funds. So over a three, five-year period, where money is set aside for things as such, so that we have that money ready.
This specific location, and I'm not asking for the rest. This specific location, because there's a two-lane, there's one pulling to the right, we're using, you know, we want, you know, there's gonna be a crosswalk where people are gonna walk. All I'm asking is, in that agreement, let there be a, between the city and all of that, will the, will we, uh, repave this, not repave this, but re-stripe every, every amount. But when you have to.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I could, I, I can tell you, I can tell you with our striping, it's usually every three years. Um, the striping that we use lasts, um, one to two years always. We usually re-stripe every three years. But, no, I got you, but I would say every two years would probably be.
So you're gonna do a striping for the two lanes? Like you're gonna stripe?
We're striping the entire parking lot.
Well, I understand. When you do two lanes, you're gonna take, be taken off parking spots on both sides. So that's four lanes now we're talking.
No, 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 no. We're striping the, the, the drive-through, like where you drive around and you, you're striping, you're, that's, I'm gonna use, I don't, I'm using the wrong term.
Okay.
Striping is used where people can park. We're going to have it laid out where people know.
Yeah.
This is where I stop and this is where I go through.
Pass through and stop?
Yes.
Get it?
With it, with arrows. With the arrows, directional arrow.
Be like this. Yeah. You strike, and then there's gonna be another stripe like this.
So I'm saying that green line is gonna be two lanes, correct?
There you go.
Yes, if you see right there, you see those arrows?
Yeah.
That's where the striping, that's where the lineage will be. And that's how it will be, uh, the, the, the arrows will be there, the line will be there.
Yeah, but that's gonna take from the parking spots though. Like when he uses the parking lot, it's gonna take from the parking spots. If you're gonna have.
No, we're actually gonna be adding some parking because that lower area, okay, so next to the circle, the red circle, you see that white area, that's current grass? We're gonna be expanding that a little bit over there where it's actually gonna give us a little bit more room so we won't have to take away parking spots.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Deeb?
Yes, sir. My name is Ali Deeb. I'm speaking as the city engineer. I just wanted to say that this is, uh, wanted to say that this is a, a, a good solution to an existing problem. There's no doubt. Safety, I mean, that's, that's an existing condition now. Um, uh, the devil is always in the details. Uh, uh, the condition of the parking lot is not a secret to anyone here. Um, I spent the last year or so looking at, uh, the design and construction of that existing parking lot now. Um, to put it mildly, if you are to build that parking lot today, you won't be allowed to. So this is a, this is a huge parking lot. It has a very unique, it's grandfathered in. It has a very unique drainage system. And that drainage system is a combination of things that were done over time that you currently cannot have. So one of the, these things are, um, um, a drainage that, that is, uh, sheet drain to the east and west, uh, to the parking, to prevent flooding. And, uh, so, um, I happen to agree with council chair on this one, and we normally don't agree a lot, but, uh, this particular one, this project should be done as one project. So whatever we do to repave that parking lot, we need to maintain that in such a way that the points, the high points and low points in the drainage, uh, since we're grandfathered in, um, um, let's do it the same way. So whatever we do, I did some, uh, survey on that lot and I did some high points and that confirmed everything we said because the county didn't turn any records to us. So it does not flood and we like to keep it that way. Now, uh, the actual construction of that parking lot, um, um, I cored that pavement. And, um, um, it really is minimal. Um, it doesn't, you know, again, we're grandfathered in, I won't be able to build that parking lot today. If I was to do it today, I will need storage underground and ponds and all that stuff. So what, what I like to do is if this is approved, I think it needs to be put as, as one project, whether this school does it, I have no issues with it. Bid it, do it, whatever, but just one project, one design, one, one engineering. So it's not, it's going to be to both of our benefits. I don't wanna, I want them to accommodate it and, and also not hurt our part, our part. Because if I go to fix ours, ours is gonna have to be fixed. You have potholes bigger than my car. So, um, they're not simply a, you know, patch job. They need to be redone. So I think, I think it's, it's worth it to come out with some kind of a deal uh, for this team, um, to, uh, we provide the design, that's fine.
I have, I have, I have a question real quick. Mary Ann, if you don't mind. Because I know we're currently working on the budget. I know that we budgeted for the parking lot. Does that money still there or did it go back in the general fund and wait?
No, the, uh, parking lot was removed last fiscal year from the budget and it has not been budgeted again. So it would have to come from the fund.
Where?
The general fund.
General fund?
You mean fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fund balance from the general.
We have no, we have no money in the fund balance. What's the plan?
I mean, there's still some money remaining in the fund balance, definitely not a lot, so we have to be cautious. But this is a project that we promised to do when we leased the property, when we agreed to keep the golf course. We knew the costs that were associated with keeping it. And the hope is that the revenues are gonna come once the businesses start bringing in revenue because we're gonna get ten percent of all of that.
Use cost benefit analysis on this. But, but we did budget for it. It was not used.
Correct. We had budget for, budgeted for it when we first did the lease agreement, but it was agreed.
Fund and we used the money that went from the general fund and then we didn't put it in a restricted fund. Because we never put in a restricted fund and it was being used, we no longer have the money. It's not because the city council removed it from the budget. I wanna make it clear. Not one city council member said, no, we don't wanna fix the parking lot. The money wasn't used, it wasn't put in a restricted fund, it went to the general fund. Here we are three years later and the money's not available. Thank you. So, Mr. Deeb, going back to you. I know you say, well, hey, I wanna do the project, you know, all together. The truth is, well, the money that we budgeted for it the first part was gonna do this part as well, which will now save us some money. Again, and it just, sorry, the money was never put in a restricted fund and it went back to the fund balance?
My point is not about the funding only, it's about the actual construction. So instead of doing piecemeal and screwing up the grades and face an issue that I, I really don't have a solution for, if it's done as one project, regardless of who does it, I, I will be willing to have them do it, that's fine. We provide the engineering and stuff and I'll be happy, I'll be happy to assist and provide whatever information we have now and they can bid it out and, and construct it. The concern is, do it as one project so that, so maintain the place and it doesn't flood for either one of us. We both need to live with that.
Well, you can, council chair, you could do it as one project, but in phases.
Yeah.
You know, design it, have a master plan and this to, this, this phase first.
So, so Mr. Isa is ready to open for business. So, um, uh, I mean, it, 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 what's, when's the next phase? I, I think the next phase is, is now. I, I mean.
The good news is, we're in budget season. The mayor is supposed to give us a budget. I know he put something for the golf course. I hope that he budgeted for it. Right? You want, you want us to figure it out?
No, no, I didn't say that. I just said, I pointed out my concerns to make sure that this place is, is, is working. We both need to live with that.
I agree.
And if, if it's done by, by them, part of that, part of that lease agreement, make it part of the lease agreement.
What, the whole parking lot?
No, maybe fifty-fifty. I will go fifty-fifty. Fifty-fifty is good. Already signed a contract.
Just, just so the council is aware, I have a limited budget.
I have no budget.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah.
You don't.
But I, I can say with what Mr. Deeb is saying is that Mr. Deeb and our team have been working together so that if we move forward, we do it where it's not going to be, we do it and then the city does their own thing. We're gonna work together so that the whole.
Are you an engineer as well?
I'm not an, I'm not a contractor.
Okay. Is your, is your engineer on site while this is all taking place?
There is a survey engineer on site, yeah.
Okay.
Box, box the, uh, site.
That's, that's, that's not, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't work with the drainage.
Hey.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna have a, 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 try to solve a problem or cause a bigger problem.
Well, we're, we're milling and we're milling an inch and a half and replacing the existing. And the top of the grade is matching the existing, so we're not disturbing.
And how much are you saying this project's gonna cost? If you guys are just.
How, we are, we are waiting on our bids to come in. They don't know yet.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
So, so this is part of that challenge. Because it is such an old facility, it, it, it's a combination. So if you look at the actual drainage system, the, the catch basins in the parking lot, they're minimal, very minimal. The, um, um, we looked at old aerial photos and, and a couple of people that actually know that place. They rely on, on sheet drainage to the east and west. And there is a ditch, an actual ditch on the west side that goes into a holding pond and the holding pond goes into the river. I went and physically located that. I even had a survey done to confirm it. It's, it's, it's a combination. It's really an old system. You don't see, you're not allowed to build it today. If you were to do it today, you won't be able to. So we like to be grandfathered in, re- uh, uh, you know, restore it to what it was to work for both of us at minimal cost. So I don't have to put an underground storage system. That's millions of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Any more comments from anybody?
No more comments. Anything from the team? Anything for Mr. Isa?
I, I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the council. I appreciate the mayor's office. I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the Isa brothers.
Is, is, um, Jason Purcell on here?
He had a scene of. He's there.
Yeah, can you unmute him? I wanna hear from him, anything from him.
Hey, Mo, um, can you hear me all right?
Yes, Jason, how you doing? I just wanna hear from you a little bit too.
Well, appreciate that. Thanks. Um, look, I, I think the liquor license is a real concern. People have to understand that if you can't serve liquor at a wedding or you can't serve liquor at a steakhouse, that those businesses are really gonna struggle to exist. So if the liquor license was to shut down, I mean, it would impact the golf course, the banquet hall, the steakhouse in such a way that I just don't know those, these businesses are viable without them. So I think that is an important thing to, you know, to really consider. Um, because otherwise the impact could be a detriment on the properties here and certainly we don't want that. The second thing, and I, I really think this is an important point. The premises, the definition of the premises in the lease excludes the parking lot. That was intentionally done, right? So we do not, or the Isa brothers do not lease the parking lot. The city owns the parking lot. That was done intentionally. In fact, there's a definition in the contract that says specifically that uh, the tenant shall have unrestricted use of the exterior of the premises. And the exterior of the premises is the parking lot, the sidewalks and so on, and that's how it's defined, right? So it, it, in, at least in my opinion, as the attorney, as an attorney and also somebody who entered into that contract, it is the city that needs to lease this property and to make that decision. And what I'm honestly concerned about is just, it is, I mean, that was intentionally done. The parking lot is the city's responsibility and I don't want that to be flipped on to either West or Reby Golf. Our business is that now we're responsible for the parking lot as, you know, as we move forward in this process.
No, but I think ultimately this, the thing, the conversation is happening with West, you, the city and the school. It is because like, kind of like Councilman Munson was saying, we, we all wanna work together on this. I, we're not legal, legally, we're not saying you guys are held responsible for it. I know you guys have still taken on a lot of the responsibilities of it. But the truth is, I mean, we're, we're, we're engaging you for, for the sake of respect. And, and so that's what it comes back down to, I think. I know, we know, you know, legally where things stand here.
Copy that. I just, yeah, I, I'm just worried, I don't think that we can lease to, to the school, right? I mean, maybe, and, and that's up to attorneys to ultimately figure out. But I, I, I feel like it's gotta be the city that makes the decision, can, are they leasing it to the school?
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
No, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. So hello, your dad back there.
Thank you.
Council Chair, may I ask if someone from the city can send me a copy of the lease agreement with the Isa brothers so I can get that to my attorney?
I think you already did that. I think she sent it to us.
If you did, then I already gave it to my attorney, but just in case.
Yeah, I believe she, we did that, yeah.
You may have already, and I would have given it to my attorney, but just in case, I'll resend it. Because he reviewed it.
Just resend it to my guy with me on it.
Please, thank you.
Any other concerns? Well, I appreciate you guys' time and really, uh, this is obviously a decision that has to be made and it'll be added to the next city council and the council will discuss and decide. So any, any city council members? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a quick.
I do, I'm sorry. I just, uh, with this, I just, I'm, I'm, I do have an issue with, uh, one thing, engineering. Let's get an engineer to look at what the plans you guys submit. Just not to mill it. I think it'd be fair on both sides, on both properties, on the city and on the school district.
Just wanna clarify, the drawings were engineered by an engineer.
Right, but I'm saying for, for, for water flow and everything for drainage.
It, it has been, yes.
But you guys are just saying it's milled, but the engineer here is saying that, um, we just gotta, because the problem is, is that, that golf course.
Gonna do exactly what we're doing.
No, no, but what I'm saying is that we already have, we have a water issue back there, an erosion issue on that property.
So we'll, we'll go back to the drawings we have, which were done by an engineer. We'll make sure that engineer's on site and that all of this is being reviewed and.
Well, no, just explain to him the way Mr. Deeb said, the way the flow of gravity of the way water pitches out.
Let the engineers deal with each other. And whatever they come out, just give us that. I'll come by next week.
We'll get, we'll get on that first thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna take a quick three-minute recess and then we'll start our police discussion.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
And 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 do the stuff that we should do on a daily basis. It'll also help us lower our overtime and all that um. So, one of the goals with these thirteen officers is 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 to bring back traffic enforcement. That's one of the goals. The second goal is, we so we would uh we 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 have a wish list and the wish list would be four officers that do traffic enforcement, two in the south, two in the north. The other uh, the other thing that we had in mind is 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 a special ops. Uh, Lu- Lieutenant Gazowski has been a member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, signed a task force as DEA. He's a uh, very, I'd like to say, hard-nosed proactive lieutenant. And uh, when we first came to this, when I first came to city, we had a conversation about how we don't have a special ops unit. A special ops unit is the individuals that are proactive, that go after fugitives, that go after people that are stealing vehicles from our neighbors and our residents and and committing part one crimes. We have no unit like that in this city. No one that we can turn to and say, hey, you know, there's there's a group of guys in the south end that are stealing cars, go out there, get down the cover vehicle, go do surveillance, you go over there and arrest them. We don't have it. It's not there. Um, that would be the other four. So now we're at E. Um, one of the other issues that we also talked about is we don't have any community relations police officers, neighborhood police officers. And the goal is to get two, put one in the north end, one in the south. And those people are only assigned to issues with the community, blight issues, uh garbage day trash pickup issues. Um, Airbnbs or whatever, short-term rentals. You know, they're the officers that are go out here, will go out here and have conversations with the uh, the neighbors. And and their neighborhood police officers, that's their job. You know, people have access to them, citizens will be able to call them directly on their phone. And talk about what's going on in their neighborhoods. We don't have them. We don't have one in the south, we don't have one in the north. So now we're at ten. And the other three was, I I'm very big on this because I come from 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 a task force background. He's also pretty big on it because he comes from it. We don't have the fed, the feds involved in our police department. We don't have TFO, Task Force Officers. We don't have those resources. When you have an officer who's working for the marshals, not only is the marshal paying to have that officer, but they're also training that officer. They're also allowing us to use their resources. We don't have that. We don't have anybody on a task force.
So basically seeing the marshals pay for the officer, so we don't pay for him?
They pay.
But let's have it done.
With the task force, but we just don't have the manpower to send them there. We don't, we don't have anybody that focuses on drugs in our city. That's where Mnet comes into play. We've talked about Mnet. Myself and the lieutenant here sat down with the bosses who run Mnet. And they're offer, they're offering us the world to allow us to send one of our officers to them. We don't have no one that's assigned to a federal task force.
You you know, I think, Chief, I know you're coming into this role as a very short and time that you've been here. The truth is, and I don't know if you know this from last year, or maybe you've been watching these meetings, it's not that we don't want this.
Yes.
It's can we sustain it? You know, the truth is, we're, you know, we we have a city that's, doesn't generate much revenue to. And so if you're not generating this revenue, this money cash flow, this money that's coming in, other than certain things. All that revenue money is already getting, going to being paying for personnel information. Um, you know, or you know, we're just, everybody's payroll, paying retirees, paying your health insurance and everything, by the end of it, you have nothing left. So, when you wanna give a raise, you want to increase and be able to, you know, come up with a tentative agreement with your department, you're like, can't pay that. But then when you do give it to them, it's great, but then you can no longer hire the thirteen police officers. And so really, it's kinda like, it's like a rubber band. No matter how far you stretch this, whoever lets go first is getting hurt. It it's, it's it's a.
If I may, so, so another benefit to these task forces and other special, so one of the benefits to these task forces in special positions is uh, eventually they save on legacy costs, right, for training. So, um, we send guys out into these task forces, they get trained by the marshals or the DEA or the FBI or these narcotics uh, task forces, right? And now, once they've served their time, now they're coming back into our department, now they're training other guys. I say, you know, that saves money on training in the future. It saves money on uh, equipment because.
I I don't disagree with you.
Right, so you know, it may not be a short-term uh, solution, right? But it's set up for the long-term success of not only our police department, but the individuals in our police department, and then ultimately our community, right? So.
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree and I I believe, yes.
Um, do any of these positions, were they, I don't know, gonna create revenue some way?
So yeah, along with, along with uh, the experience and the training that they get, uh, most of these positions are involved in uh, the asset forfeiture program through the federal government. And so we do, we do get significant amounts of revenue, uh, a lot of the times from these guys, especially on the federal task force side.
Everything that Chief said, all those positions, yeah, and you know, we can find the money. We're just, we're just talking about coming up with half a million dollars for a parking lot.
Right.
You know. More than one point five.
Right, and so a lot of these things are things that we've previously had at the front, or you guys have all been here long enough to know when we had these, these units, these special things, right? So, um, you know, we.
Mark Pernello, he was great.
What what happened to the lieutenant?
Right, so, um, we had, we had a change in administration at the police department, right? And they tried a new vision, and it was, it was a well-constructed vision. We all saw the vision, we knew what it was. But didn't seem to fit our puzzle, right? That piece, their their vision of of the puzzle didn't fit with what we needed at our department. It wasn't through neglect, it wasn't through any sort of uh, failure of command. It wasn't through anything other than, we tried some new ideas and it seems to have not worked, right?
The simple ideas was to eliminate them?
What's that?
The simple ideas were eliminate these different.
Or or reassign them or reimagine, reimagine some of these positions, right?
So they set up the department for failure.
So it was a perfect story. Not everyone was having the same dream, I guess. Let Councilman once finish. Look, what I was saying, you know, I I just, I said this at a couple other different meetings about thinking outside the box to create revenue. I mean, these positions, I'm sure uh, the traffic division, that that'll create revenue, you know, and you know, thi- this is something.
I I understand it's revenue, but on our side, that's not the goal.
Yeah, I know. I'm saying that you, this is not gonna be, this is gonna be deferred, this cost will be partially deferred by revenue generated by these positions, you know.
Our our goal is for the community, it's to save garbage.
Hmm, oh yeah.
And answer their complaints. Then when you have these officers in place, we can do that.
I like the, you know, the 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 city officers of neighborhood. When I first came out here, uh, the chief that was in place at that time, I talked to him, I said, you know, when I was grew, I grew up in Dearborn Heights, there would be, there was a phrase, you know, the pop that he would stop his car and in the middle of the block and he would walk down one side of the block, he'd talk to the neighbors and walk down the other side, close to his car at all times. And every, one, couple of times a week, he, they would do that, you know, just, and you know, they were, it it was so cool to see that, and he knew the people and the dogs and, you know, I mean, that's what we need, we need, you know, people love firefighters, right? You know, everybody, everybody hates the cops, you know, this is a thing that we can get, like, we get the police involved. Cause I I do a lot of activities and I get the police involved, they come out and do things. Let's get the police back into the neighborhoods, get a good image for them, you know?
But that's, that's the vision that we share, right? And that's, that's why we're asking for these ex- extra uh, extra staff.
I like it.
If we're able to get what we want, then we can, we can go after the other things too. Like, for example, one of the most successful programs we have ongoing right now in the department is TSP, Traffic Support Patrol. Officers come in, work overtime, they go enforce traffic violations on Ford Road, Telegraph, Van Born, throughout the city of Dearborn Heights. So imagine if we didn't have to pay these guys overtime, or we could do this on regular time. We could take that money that we're spending to pay them to do this, now we could do what? We could go after the blight issues, we can go after garbage day pickup. I mean, it's crazy that like, that people call about cars being parked in the street, they're garbage.
Oh yeah, yeah.
All the time, you know, it's, it's, it's a win-win for all of us. You know, it it's, I mean, I know, we're, we're coming to you guys and we're asking for a lot, but trust me, trust me on this, you're gonna see a difference. You will see a different police department.
I mean, trust me, Chief, if you have the money, we're all for it. Definitely, I'm with you, but I know we, we talked yesterday about the reserves. I think we need to put some effort on having those reserves and to give them some power too, to do whatever you guys do in a way when they volunteer. Uh, so we can, what, I mean, whatever, whatever they can do, whatever the law, you know, you know, allows them to do, so we can save some money.
So I have, so, quick story on the reserves. We have ten reserves, but they're, they haven't been active for a while. So, I mean, these are older men that have kinda grown out of their uniform. And right now, I don't have enough money to put them in new uniforms, because the goal is that I'm trying to hire five more police officers. So I have enough money to outfit these five police officers that we're gonna hire, and then after that, I'm gonna use it to get the reserve some uniforms. The reserves will be out there, come.
We can't use it for forfeiture funds for our uniforms, for the reserves?
No.
No?
No.
Have you looked into like a sponsorship, local businesses sponsoring the reserves, something like that?
We have it, but that's something that we have, had a conversation about.
I'm sure there's businesses out there, they they say, I'd love to sponsor a reserve, when you know, in this.
So we have ten, we have ten, and we're, we're, we're seeking more reserve officers, but we have to send them to the academy. And that's also gonna cost us money. It isn't much.
You know, but I want you to know something, the reserves are not union. So like when, you know, I'm just using my buddy Mike Neme, who went to Dearborn's uh, Dearborn sent him to the academy. Yeah, Ahmed Neme, very good friend of mine. I actually went to his swearing-in. He paid to go to the academy, he paid for his uniform. And you gotta remember, you have a lot of people in the community that have a passion and love for this community and for the police department.
Reserve.
And who will pay to go to the academy and pay for the uniform. I think, know what I mean, they didn't pay for, and they're, I think his employer, out-of-pocket cost was five thousand dollars. And he paid twenty-five hundred to go to the academy, and he paid twenty-five hundred dollars for his uniform. And he, and he serves twelve-hour shifts for the city of Dearborn. No, I mean, he does, whenever Dearborn calls him, but there there's, they do a twelve-hour shift and there's like an eight-hour shift. He always does a twelve-hour shift, and he's built a relationship, and like, he likes these guys and girls that are there and, and you know, he's.
The the reserve, I see your vision, trust me, it's in our vision too. We want it to, that's why we recently assigned a sergeant to it, Sergeant Sertle. He's assigned to it, that's his assignment, is the reserves, and it's also traffic. He's one man. You're told, hey man, take this role, do good at it, hopefully, after the city council meeting, the next couple of months, we'll be able to give you an actual crew to work traffic with, you know, so we're, we're putting things in place to, to get these people. And yeah, yeah, I.
And the reserves is not a solution, guys, if we need officers, that's the truth.
Everybody help, and Chief, I would like to thank you too on record uh, for pushing forward the Explorer Program.
Yes, thank you.
The police department, that's something, I mean, I've been waiting for, and I think our children in the city and like our kids need something, something like that program.
And you know how much money people, like you just said, people have reached out and gave us money to get ten uniforms. Like, it's, our community, with open arms is gonna, is gonna help. This is amazing community.
Can we start with the budget season now? I know you requested for much, they only gave you forty-five. The good news is, uh, it's a fluid document. You need to come back and say, hey, we wanna get ten more officers and if we hire ten more, you know, former Chief Swob did that. Said, look, I wanna bring in this, these X amount more police officers, put more REOs, we're actually gonna get paid to the district if we have these uh, school resource officers, and but, but it's only gonna cost the city X amount of value.
Councilor Chair, the million-dollar question here, I mean, Chief Swob, he did ask for forty-five, and now Chief Hader is saying we only have thirty-eight. Are you gonna be able to hire thirteen or whatever, thirteen more people?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty more people in the next year? Is that possible?
Yeah, so we have, we have a kid, an an another male that's uh, graduating academy coming up here in a month, that's gonna put us at thirty-nine. We've had an officer who returned to us recently that was off for almost three years, that puts us at forty. We have six kids that are uh, are completed, tested.
Men.
And six men.
And a woman.
No women. Six, six, six men that uh, unfortunately, we haven't had any women yet, we plan on doing that. We have six men who.
Hopefully, if we have more females in the Explorer Program, that eventually they're gonna be home officers, maybe one day.
So no, we, 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 before the, the, the physical year, we should be at forty-five. That's the goal.
Before the end thirty?
Yeah, we're gonna be at forty-five. I I'll be pretty upset if we're not at forty-five by mid-May. I mean, ask him the nasty email I sent him. That's all, I want this done. We're gonna be at forty-five. We'll be at our number.
How, how many you said for the task forces? How many officers?
Three.
Three?
Yes.
I mean, I know, at least we can maybe push it to fifty-three, give you five more and three for the task force. Not good here, but I need, I need, there's, there's a couple, I had questions here on the personnel page.
Yeah.
And I know like the Director of Support Services, like, we're not gonna have, uh, the person is in, in that position is gonna be go, leaving, correct?
Yeah, so if you look at the spreadsheet I sent you, I didn't propose that.
Okay.
I wiped it out.
And uh.
But it's not, this is what's being proposed.
This is what being, yeah, and I uh, to my knowledge, when I met with you the other day, you said there's two more lieutenants or at least two, they're gonna be testing for captains.
Correct.
So I need, I think we need to adjust this here too. I mean, we have, it says here one captain, so I think we need somehow to have enough money to have at least three captains.
And then we also did a budget here for the two additional sergeants in this.
So we are, so.
We have sixteen or eighteen sergeants now?
We have uh, we have sixteen.
With the two that I just sworn in yesterday, so this is correct?
No, because last year we were at sixteen, that was, that was a dilemma that we had, guys. You're gonna be at eighteen sergeants. If I'm not mistaken, I'll pull it up.
So the, the, the manpower one you're looking at, it does say one captain, proposed one. If you go back to mine, I have it proposed as two.
Two?
Two, I'm, I'm looking at the one, because, because you also, you also have a deputy chief spot that's in there. That, that's vacant right now, and no one has that position. So, let's say, for example, after the test, hopefully, you know, Lieutenant Gazowski and Lieutenant Pauls both pass it and become captains. Now you're looking at three captains.
Correct.
So the goal is, is to take of those three, and one of them become the deputy chiefs. And then once they're deputy chiefs, then now the numbers are even.
But we are gonna follow X seventy-eight for the deputy chief division, correct?
There's no other way to do it.
Alright, great. Well, no, there is, there is other ways to do it. I mean, the mayor.
Somebody did it another way.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot, I mean, you came in as a deputy chief at one point.
Every day with me going in it is obviously reading the Lex seven, everything, every day. Tell me.
Mayor holds an H uh, PhD in uh, X seventy-eight violation.
Even, even though you see it as one, two would be, it's, it's, it may be fine, because you don't have a deputy chief. So, you don't have one right now, so having three captains is not gonna affect the budget. But we don't want it like that. We do want a deputy.
Uh, we're gonna have a deputy chief.
Oh yeah, we're going to.
So that's, I would, it would affect the budget.
Yeah.
But uh, since the uh, Director of Support Service is gonna be vacated, do you think it's safe to take off the budget or?
Yeah, yeah, I wholeheartedly agree, you know.
Yeah, so yeah, because, I mean, if you're not gonna need the.
Colonel, what do you think?
I think you should take it off the budget. If it's, if he, if you know, if you have information that he's not gonna be here, then I don't think.
Well, well, let me ask you a question. How many, how many different police officers can we hire over this deputy or? Well, the question is, is this the cost for a lieutenant?
Pardon me?
Is this the same price?
Yeah, oh, captain.
As a captain, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then you kinda wanna just remove the name of it and just call it a captain instead of.
Yes.
Director of Support Services, just change the, the personality.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes, because in the budget, you still have deputy chiefs, and you have.
So you wanna have a chief, a deputy chief, captain.
Two captains.
I mean, two captains, so just make the Director of Support Services a captain. That doesn't have to be the actual pay, it'll be a captain pay, anything over, we just go back to the general.
No, you just take that line and just make two captains, that's it.
Right, right.
You wanna make it so hard? Just take that line off, that position.
I just wanna make clear, I am not being in any way, shape or form an attack at anyone. I don't, I promise you, all I'm saying here is, I'm not trying to violate the injunction. I'm just following the direction of our captain or.
We understand, we.
Our lieutenants.
Looking at the line and I'm hearing.
Yeah, so I don't want anybody to say that I'm violating the injunction. Mariana, am I violating the injunction in any way, shape or form? Do you think?
Not for her, but it's duplicative to have, but.
Yeah.
Funding for a position that we're not gonna have.
Mariana, I will tell you for the record, I am not in violation of, of the injunction. I'm not trying to do that, and I hope you understand my body language and demeanor is not due. That's all, I'm just trying to.
We're the one that had zero, not you.
But is it?
We're the ones that had zero there, not you.
We don't have zero.
Well, we have zero on our proposal. That's what we're asking for zero.
Who is asking for zero?
We are.
Whose we are?
The police department.
So are you saying the police department does not want to have a police of, you know, a Director of Support Services?
Well, that'd be cool.
Councilor Chair, i- if I may, just to be clear, I haven't seen an official letter of the Director of Support Services leaving. So just to be cautious, until we have that, I would keep it in the budget. If there, if there is information that there is a change coming, as soon as we have an official paperwork stating that, we can remove it from the budget.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Mariana because of the, because of the federal injunction, the last thing I want is them to say they removed it out of, out of, out of the budget hearing, uh, a recommendation from the chief to remove it.
Correct.
But the chief would actually be in violation of the federal injunction as well.
Correct, and if, sorry, one second, and also, again, if this individual chooses to leave, again, it's in our union contract that that position is not to be filled, so that position would automatically disappear, just to be.
Union contract, well, you guys have to follow those union contracts and. But, but I will say, Chief, Lieutenant, thank you guys for that. I, you can hear the rumbling of Councilman once sold down to Councilman uh, constant about that. But the truth is, we don't wanna be in violation. I don't want this to be used against us, especially since it's like, the meeting is coming so close.
Councilor Chair, can we get a legal opinion on that, uh, before we approve the budget?
Well, yeah, before we fix that, yeah.
Let's do that.
We'll, we'll get a public opinion, I mean, we'll get, we'll get a legal opinion, but.
Unfortunately, we're never a corporation, Councilor.
But, but the truth is, Gary has told us.
Not Gary, the attorney for, the city attorney. City, the city attorney as well. It says that the, as of May ninth, well, that Director of Support Services will be leaving. Uh, it says constructive discharge and termination of position of that person. Gary, uh? You say person or position?
Person.
So if there's documentation, we just need to make sure it's with HR, and then you can make whatever changes.
The justice from uh.
Yes, we have the Director of HR.
Guys, guys, yeah, we'll, we'll get an opinion on it. Yes, okay, let's have, Mary, let's go through the actual budget line item. And you can do it, Mahdi, and then if we have any questions, we'll ask the chief.
Yes, sorry. Sorry, uh, most of the rest of the personnel pages are the same, but I did wanna note that the dispatchers are at ten right now. Um, I believe that there's currently nine dispatchers in the department. Um, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, so there is nine dispatchers in the department, but that's the only change that was also in the personnel.
Well, I think there was in the contract, they had to be at nine and a half or something.
So we have tons?
We have nine, but they're at major budgeting.
Yeah, we had the budget for nine and a half to under the contract.
I know, uh, the Chief, yesterday I seen a young lady at the department saying she was uh, applying for a dispatcher.
Yes.
We had a hard time getting dispatchers last year, so just apply then, please, look into it. Just, just so you guys know, and some are saying ten, yeah, we, in our.
Begin the mic.
We, 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 we're requesting twelves. It matters at all. We request a twelve.
I mean, look.
That's a good time.
Uh, Chief, I wanna tell you, we can request for a hundred. We have to figure out how to come up with that. You have, you as the administrators, the police chief has to say, I want fifteen officers, this is how much it's gonna cost. This is where we're gonna run it, this is where the revenue is coming in from, you know, this is how it's gonna work, and so you have to show us a flow chart, you know?
Yeah, the numbers are there, what it's gonna cost and stuff like that. I understand that, I have to break it down for you, show you where it's gonna come and where it's.
Yeah, but I'm sure it's there, we just have to, you just have to explain it so that we do our fiduciary duty as a city council.
I understand. Cause if we don't have the dispatcher, then an officer fills in his dispatcher at a much higher rate, correct? That's correct, and it's on overtime and they get a higher hourly rate and it comes out of our overtime budget. You're right.
By the way, Mariana, can you also let me know, what, what does the dispatch contract say? Do we have to budget for thirteen or is it nine and a half? I believe last year's uh, Swob told us nine and a half.
I'm so sorry, I don't recall what the minimum number is on dispatch, I can look that up for you though.
The minimum says ten, I mean, uh, if the minimum says thirteen, and we're in violation of that contract, one, I wish we didn't negotiate a contract we couldn't fulfill, number negotiating in bad faith, but two.
I can look it up, but I don't believe that's the case. I haven't had a grievance from the department. I'm sure I would have if we were violating it in any way.
You look that up for me real quick, if you're interested.
Okay, if there's no more question on the personnel page, can I go forward with the budget?
Yes.
Well, no, I also wanna know how many sergeants.
Well, look at last year's.
Yeah.
Sixteen?
Last year you had sixteen?
Yeah.
So now we have eighteen.
We were too short on that, but we need to update those numbers. Oh, you need the police.
They had them at the same one. Well, they had, they had them combined with the, they had the whole command officers twenty-two, last year.
We'll just count them.
Eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So last year, they combined all the command together as one, so they had twenty-two altogether.
And now we have twenty-four.
Can somebody just tell us, do we have sixteen sergeants right now, or do we have eighteen right now?
You have eighteen.
With the two additional?
Yes.
Counting the two that were loaded yesterday.
Yeah, now you have eighteen, but we're only budgeting for sixteen, so we have to fix that number, please. And so now your patrol officers, you don't have thirty-eight, you have thirty-six. Because now you've taken two from.
No, no, I took the two from that thirty-eight.
Well, no, not in our.
Forty.
I, I, oh, hold on, in our budget, we're not. Our budget is saying, we have forty-five. Okay, you told me you have thirty-eight.
Yes.
Really have thirty-six.
I had forty as of yesterday.
Yeah, thirty-eight is counting, it includes the two sergeants that were promoted to.
Okay, so we, okay, so we have a roster right now, currently with the two gone, we have thirty-eight officers?
Yes.
And we have one in the academy, puts you at thirty-nine, and potentially a higher that puts you at forty.
No, the one coming back.
Sorry, sorry, I came back, so, so that puts you at forty. We're really at thirty-nine right now. We're thirty-eight or thirty-nine?
We're thirty-nine, in a month we'll be at forty with the kid graduating from the academy.
Young man.
The young man. They're on kids' loss.
Don't use that word with him, right?
Yeah. Young man.
Yeah, you do also do have a sergeant who's been on medical leave for a long time, over years and years. That's also on the books, so it really puts you at nineteen sergeants. And uh, his stuff is, you know, in the.
Okay.
Being given some type of settlement.
But we, we did agree to uh, push it to fifty-three, correct, for the patrol officers? Well, let's see what our budget ends up at. How much our deficit is right now, or we shoot up, uh, in my opinion. But five more police officers could be, something we might not be able to afford, or at least find cuts that we can make. Do you think those extra officers are gonna help with the overtime?
Yes, absolutely.
So let, let's, let's show that on paper then, Mahdi, if we, if we give on fifty-three officers, how's it gonna affect the overtime? If you can work with the chief to see.
Yes.
Like if we give them fif- you know, thirteen more officers, how much are we gonna be saving on overtime?
So I can work with the Chief Hader on both the overtime as well as determining about approximately how much revenue.
Basically, if I'm gonna see like, giving more and more officers, I wanna see the overtime going way down.
But you also gotta remember that revenue would also possibly go up, and like the support revenue. So, I can work with Chief Hader on that one.
Yeah.
To determine that number for you guys and see if it might affect.
You said, Councilman, uh, you said thirteen.
Speak into the mic.
I, you mean fifty-eight?
No, I said fifty-three because now we're at forty, so that's, you still have like thirteen more officers to hire for next year.
Yeah, so you know, my budget's forty-five, I'm requesting fifty-eight.
So we gave you five more, eight more. I mean, for now, just see.
Eight more.
It's a fluid document, if you're gonna hire, you can always come back for a budget amendment.
Yes.
We have to have a balanced budget, approving a budget. We can't go over our budget.
Well, no, we, we don't, it's not that we can't, where are we gonna get the money from? No? Like, like last year, we promised that we were gonna get sixty million dollars in revenue, fifty-four million. We ended up using five million, six million from the fund balance. Next, the, the, the next year that comes in for twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, we have five, six million dollars in fund balance. Or, you know, twelve million dollars in fund balance. You don't have that upper money no more. And I know the state wants to offer some, you know, some money, but they're not gonna give you money to pay to hire more police officers. They're gonna tell you to go out and buy more equipment, you know, offer different programs, they're not gonna give you that type of money.
Like last year, we were supposed to budget for fifty, but they messed up on the command, so we had to take off five from the patrol uh, to budget for three command, in order to balance the budget. So that's why I went down to.
Sure. You know, you did attend that, uh, the roundtable that they had a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, with Alabas.
Um, and, and most departments, most, most people who spoke of it, they mean, they wanted to get money for hiring.
How long has the money come around for?
That's the problem, like, see if it's. That's the problem, like, see if it's sustainable. You know, that's the big problem. When you, once we find out the amount, then it, something we can do, then we'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that coming from the state?
Yeah.
Am I still to go through the budget now?
Yes, that's fine.
Sorry, I can't find anything about the minimum staffing in their contract. I'll have to ask H R, um, but I can't see anything, just browsing through it right now.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mariana.
So, uh, for the budget on page nineteen, the salary, the salaries line item is gonna have to be updated based on the change to the personnel page. We'll get that number to you, uh, once that is updated. Uh, we have, the second line is.
Um, George, can you make sure you take note of that? The the two, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, so the next line item is the, um, payments to retirees. Uh, we are budgeting three hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-eight, that is a contractual payout, uh, retirement payouts, um, based on contract. We have crossing guards at one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars. We have part-time employees at three hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars. We have overtime at nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. We have the clothing allowance, uh, at a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Hospital insurance is gonna be one point seven million dollars. Holiday pay, which is a contractual payout, is gonna be three hundred thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. Life insurance, general government, three, uh, three forty-five pension is, uh, set based on salaries, as well as fringe benefits. For the supplies, we have sixty thousand dollars. Materials and supplies is no longer, uh, a line item, it's filtered into the supplies account, seven to eight point zero zero zero. Uh, you have the ammunition, uh, account number seven four four, eighty thousand dollars. You have utilities, seven four five point zero zero zero, that's a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, you have the seven fifty-nine point zero 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 prisoners expenses, that is twelve thousand dollars. You have dues and memberships, eight oh two point zero zero zero, at thirty-five hundred. You have contractual services, eight one eight point zero zero zero, at four hundred five thousand dollars. You don't gotta read the digit numbers. Sorry about that one.
What's that for, Chief? The services? Contract services is, uh. That's all of our, uh, our our existing contracts, like Axon, Flock, and Clemish and things, a lot of things that we have to redo annually. Everything that assists us with everyday leasing, like Flock, and all the databases that we use, that's all part of it, that's the combined. If you look at the, I think it was the second email I sent you guys, it's listed on there at at one point zero, it lists every single one of them.
Okay, there's a new service now to get documents. Before you could go there, you'd send a letter, now there's this, you go and you go to a website, you get a key, and then you download the stuff. It's not cheap, I'm sure. To to get, you know, documents or data or different things, answer for your requests.
Is it evidence dot com?
That's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Okay, so we have tuition reimbursements at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, nothing for telephone or special services, then for motor fuel, we have a hundred sixty thousand dollars.
They're for all the vehicles?
Yes, all police vehicles, they have, uh, shelf fleet cards, so they have, uh, gas things we don't have to use.
I mean, this year, we're at ninety-four thousand. I mean, I guess if you hire.
I mean, they average around, uh, eleven to twelve thousand a month.
Okay.
And then you have repairs and maintenance, uh, equipment, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Training, fifty thousand dollars, training guy three oh two, ten thousand dollars. And then it looks like those are requested amount for four hundred fifty thousand of capital outlay, which was not, uh, right in the recommended budget. I don't know, Chief, were you part of that?
I believe that's the, uh.
Microphone, please.
To write them out, but it's for the the dispatch center. It it was seven hundred fifty thousand that we requested for the dispatch center.
I saw it, I had.
Yeah, that money is not done anymore.
Yeah.
Um, Maddy, I have a question, if you go back to the hospital insurance.
Yes.
Isn't it that sat for the whole year, or did they list it on us? Cause I see we budgeted almost thirty, uh, almost, uh, one million, three hundred thousand and we're projected to pay almost one point six for this year.
So, uh, hospital insurance, I believe, went up fifteen percent. Um, H R can give us the exact number because hospital insurance did, uh.
But they, can they increase on us, like halfway in the middle of the year or they?
Yeah, well, they don't follow, they don't follow our fiscal year, they.
Okay, so what about the new, uh, numbers, the one point seven, is that something they gave you?
Yeah, that's, um, this one point seven is accounting for.
Estimate?
No, the increase, we already got the increase.
Okay, so you know.
The increase already happened, I believe the increase happened in Jul- July or December, I mean, January, December. January twenty twenty-five or December twenty twenty-four, that's, we have the, and accounts payable, I can pull it up and figure out exactly which month they increased.
So so they, so they increased this year, they're gonna increase again next year?
No, Blue Cross increased it, uh, in December twenty twenty-four, January twenty twenty-five. Um, we do not determine when they increase it, I don't know exactly what the laws are regarding that about how or when they can increase it. I can get that information from H R and get, provide that to you.
Almost four hundred thousand, yeah, but we have no.
That's not something.
Same, but I'm just trying to see.
It's an annual contract, uh, we are currently out for bids for, um, a new benefits consultant, because we wanna offer different options to our employees, so it's actually out for bids right now. Um, because we're not happy with the increases on the amount that we're paying currently, so it's currently out for bids, so we'll see if we get better luck.
Who are you with currently?
Plant Moran. We have been with them for decades, so again, we we thought it was time to go out for bids again, which is currently where we are.
Healthcare and everything?
Yeah, it's 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 not Plant Moran, the P M gap area that helps us with finance, it's a separate entity within Plant Moran.
You know, Plant Moran is like the lifetime of being, you know?
Yes, it's a sub.
You get the same workout, Ali.
So, Council Chair? Council Chair? Yeah, these numbers that you're giving us, uh, for he- healthcare or hospitalization, life insurance, do they reflect the new numbers of employees that are predicted?
No, but, um, based on. Based on numbers. No, I know. So based on the new numbers, it would go up, but I do not believe it would go up a significant, significant amount, given that these are based on individual employees and not on salaries. So hospital insurance is not, hey, this guy, this person got, gets paid a hundred twenty thousand, he costs more for hospital insurance. Let's say he costs two thousand dollars a month, a- approximately. Yeah.
But all the insurances.
So it's, the numbers are updated, but once we do go back, uh, myself, Mariana, and, uh, let me go back and update all the changes in the budget, these numbers will also be updated with, along with the salaries. We cannot give you the exact number right now, it's it's not an easy calculation, just one plus two.
Yeah, Maddy, if you, if we go down to the holiday pay, I mean, we're spending this year three, almost three thirty, so why we're only budgeting for three hundred thousand? Is it less holidays next year?
Holiday pay?
Yeah.
I honestly do not know why that was budgeted that way. I do see where your comment is, and I'll make a note of that to make sure that number is correct.
Is the budget real?
Sorry about that, what is? Come on, if you're gonna make a comment, at least.
Definitely fluid, huh? What's real about this budget?
No. I thi- I think the same thing, Maddy, uh, goes with the fringe benefit.
Fringe benefit?
Yeah, like there's almost two hundred, almost close, uh, about two hundred fifty thousand. Like, we're gonna be spending seven ten for this year, we only given now six eighty, even though they asked for nine oh three.
Give me one second. So the fringe benefits is only supposed to be by the FICA tax, which is social security and Medicare. Based on that calculation, it should only be five fifty, but I gotta also, uh, check that number for you.
You said five fifty?
Yeah.
Now we're spending seven ten this year.
Um, because currently, the way we are entering the revenue, like the expenses, um, some of the items that aren't in fringe benefits, we're filling into fringe benefits and we remove those at the end of the year. So at the end of the year, it gets adjusted back down to.
It gets extra money to put back into the fund balance?
Well, uh, uh, there's all the expense line items that those go onto, um, and then we make an adjustment on that in the year.
So who who requested this number for the fringe benefit, the nine oh three? Who does, who who does it request? Is that H R?
No, that's, that's directly correlated to the salaries.
Who made the request, though? Uh, Adam Clark.
The Director.
So the requested, if you pay attention, it was considering the additional thirteen employees, so it was an eighteen, eleven million dollar budget rather than a seven million dollar budget, so it correlates with all of those, it will be higher with the requested, because if you had more employees, fringe benefits, healthcare costs, all would be higher.
Yeah, but this one, Mariana, did not reflect the thirteen extra employees yet.
In the requested, it does. So if you see the requested, you see that the salaries that are eleven million, three hundred and sixty-four, zero, three, seven.
Correct.
So every item that affects the employee's staffing numbers, it correlates with what the differences are there. But if you lower it, everything will lowers too.
I see, thank you.
I also heard back from our, uh, H R Director, and we will hear back from the benefits consultants around this September and October, so that's when the new rates will know what the new rates actually will be for healthcare.
Good, perfect, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Department Three Hundred?
Are we gonna emergency manager?
Uh, we're gonna do Fund Two Sixty-Five Federal Forfeitures and. Okay, okay, we'll do emergency management first.
How many we got today?
I thought we were just doing police today.
What?
I thought it's not part of the police.
So the emergency manager isn't a director, it's, it's a different department.
No, the emergency ma- is a director position.
Correct, and historically, prior to last year, emergency management had always been under the Police Department. Last year, we created a separate emergency management fund, so that we could account for what the emergency expenses would be if we do face an emergency there. So what you're gonna see now is what we would need to respond to emergencies in the case that they, um, come up. Twenty, it's right after the Police Department, but again, the emergency manager is still supervised by the Chief of Police.
But he said, after emergency manager, you want to do a different, uh, uh.
He was just following the list on our, um, schedule. The agenda list, but they all fall within the Police Department, so it's okay if we just go to the next page, which is page twenty.
So for the emergency manager, we had originally budgeted seventy-six thousand, five hundred for salaries, but, uh, well, if he, Council Chair wanted it to eighty-five because all directors are eighty-five. And then we have, uh, permission fees is on twelve hundred, fringe benefits is five thousand eight hundred, supplies is five thousand, dues and memberships is a hundred fifty, miscellaneous expenditures is seven thousand two hundred, uh, contractual services is twenty-four fifty, travel and education is thirty-two hundred, and then capital outlay under five thousand is one thousand dollars. Any questions on the emergency manager?
Don't we get money from the state for under Act Three O One or something for emergency manager?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, there's, 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 uh, there is. Thank you, my brother-in-law is the Director of Homeland Security for Wayne County, and the state gives a portion of his money, because it's, because for for his salary, so when we're saying, you know, seventy-five thousand or eighty-five thousand for the emergency manager, you're getting Three O One, it's called the Act Three O One.
I can double check that, we'll verify with.
Regarding that, um, Monsieur Deve is agreeing, and I know Monsieur Deve knows this stuff.
Yeah, he does. All right, we'll double check how much we would get for for execution, and we will put that in revenues as well, because I don't think it's allocated there either.
I mean, we're getting it, we're just not putting it on 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 books.
Okay, any other questions for emergency manager?
No.
Yeah, this definitely has nothing to do with emergency, Act Three O One.
I don't know if it's Act Three O One, my number could be off.
What's next?
Sorry, I I did just wanna bring up one item that, um, Bob Ankrap brought up, um, so.
Who brought it up?
Bob Ankrap.
Okay.
So in here, um, there is a very small amount for part-time salaries. Um, he's always recommended to increase that, because in the case of emergencies, when you need overnight shelter staffing, um, that's where that budget would come from.
What are we at right now?
I believe it's, uh, it's nothing, but he had originally requested last year thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, and that was considering the amount of nights of emergency, but again, that's a change that you can make in the case that an emergency does show up. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
In a state of an emergency, I believe the mayor has the right to make a decision, so like, if he needed to hire people in a state of an emergency, I don't think anybody on City Council is gonna tell him no, so like.
Correct, so that's why it wasn't budgeted, but I just.
You know, my theory is, and I know George is writing all these things down. Have we looked at what the new budget is? Because, you know, we're gonna be in a deficit now, like an extreme deficit, so we have to make cuts elsewhere to be able to cover up some of these things.
Once we get all the numbers, uh, Mariana and I and Saman will coordinate to figure out how we can, uh, move expenses around so we are back to a balanced budget.
Okay.
With revenues, excluding expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
It's Act, uh, Act, um, page forty-four. So page forty-four is the federal forfeiture fund.
What was it, Act what?
Uh, page forty-four. I do not know why, um, we now didn't actually budget for these items, however, they are expenses incurred by the Police Department. And I'm assuming that the Police Department would come before council and advise them when expenditures are expected, expect to happen and make budget amendments at that point, since these items aren't always known as what you're gonna expend throughout the year. I think Chief Harder. Oh no, I'm saying, it's, there's nothing, nothing budgeted for. It's like, when you do have something major purchase, you go like council knows so that they can be aware and then make the formal.
I suppose you have to have a line item for for forfeiture fund, so you can't like deplete and say, just come to us when you need it.
Correct.
Yeah, no, you can't do that.
No.
You cannot, but we've always had a line item for forfeiture fund.
So I was told by Saman, it's a formal adjustment, like, it's not something that the council is gonna be against, but just a formal, um, declaration, like, hey, we're using forfeiture funds for this amount, it'll come out of this.
You should have said we're using fund balances as well when we're using it, nobody was telling.
No, but the forfeiture one has a different fund, it has it on page forty-six, it lists the actual.
I know, I know, what I'm, what I'm telling you, the same way we have to come out and say, we're using forfeiture funds, we should, the administration should have came out and said, we're using fund balance here. We never got, we just got, we just got, I know you were for it, I'm just readdressed, that's all.
From my knowledge, they do, let you know that it comes out of the fund balance C L number. Okay, I would not falsely advertise any, uh, budget amendments.
I'm not saying you would, just tell you what happened. I'm glad that we're doing that.
Okay. Going forward, if there's ever any budget amendments, I'll make sure to make it clear that it is coming out of fund balance or from a different expense line item, so it doesn't come out of fund balance.
Thank you.
Uh, so pretty much, uh, that's forty-four to forty-eight, which they don't have actual budgets that in them. However, forty-eight at the end, well, actually forty-seven at the end, my bad. Forty-six at the end shows the, uh, balance of the forfeiture funds which can be used.
Uh, one point. One point six.
And then, uh, Fund Two Sixty-Six, which is, uh, travel mobilization, same thing, there isn't, uh, items budgeted for. However, the Police Department will come forth if there's ever any expenditures that need to be made. And the fund balance for that is three hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars, this is on page forty-eight.
Uh, Chief, since the emergency, uh, the problem is under your, uh, restriction, do you think you can send somebody to look for Act Three Ninety and see if we get money from the state, or how we can get the money from the state?
I'm trying to read up on it.
I'm trying to read up on it. Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, I'll follow up with you uh. Email or next week.
And and there's certain laws that we have to follow on the Act three ninety was when George Bush would put it into effect. Under Homeland Security or Emergency Manager, uh you have to do certain things. And I believe there was a designated person per city. Has to be the one to say this is a state of an emergency. It can't be from the actual police department. It has to be one individual. Says the city is under an emergency. Can be the mayor, can be the police chief, can be the fire chief. It can be, cannot be. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this by uh this department or the budget at the whole?
Nope, thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to make the the comment that you're already aware of of all of the needs for improvements in the Justice Center. Um so again, those are requests that our city engineer has brought up on multiple occasions. They need a new roof. They need new units, as you have discussed with the Tifa uh director. They need replacement in the stairs, I believe, um and new benches in the hallway areas. I don't know if I'm missing anything else that's critical, but there's as in any building, there's capital improvement needs.
Know it's crazy. I'm not. I I wanna. Can we ha- can you check with Tifa director, see if they can cover any any of all this stuff? And maybe the dispatch too. I mean, they had the money.
The money.
And pretty much they uh they funded the building. I just wanna know what happened on our property. That's what I want to know.
So ten million was the revenue loss.
And then we had salary increases with every union contract negotiation. So all of the money went to salaries and back pay.
Invested a dollar in the city.
No.
Yeah.
We invested into the employees.
So hypothetically speaking, the ten million revenue loss, you can twist it to fit whatever agenda you want. I'm just gonna say that.
Yep. The the repairs that uh Mariana was talking about at the Justice Center and the police department, it's also in the email sent to you guys, page two. If you wanna take a look.
I I I mean, I can't believe this is why we need a grant money. I can't believe they grant money and not help. To fix up your police stations, you know? You know how much money we you know, you know, during, under Obama, I mean, not Obama, under Biden's administration. Under Biden's administration. I don't care if you like Biden or Trump. I don't care for either one. I didn't vote for them. But under his administration, he gave away thousands and millions of dollars of grant money. This next president is saying, I'm putting a halt. I'm not giving anybody anything right now till we see what's going on. I'm doing the whole Doge investment. Taking a look at it. So we really, in those last four years, we gave up twenty million dollars that money. You know how much the city of Dearborn collected?
Talk about it.
Man, it's past. I know. We're not gonna think about it. We're moving forward.
You're sorry?
Does it ringtone? Any any other questions? Any comments from uh from the thing? Comments from the public?
Stukminsky and void Dearborn Heights. So one thing I want just for you guys to remember. Return on investment. And I know that it's an arbitrary number. The more police we have, the more tickets they write, the less overtime they have, the less crime our city has, the better our city has a name. The more increase in our home value. All of that goes together. And I'm not even mentioning the federal forfeiture money, the three hun- or three hundred and eighty thousand levon you got because we don't have a narcotics unit. So there's lots of money there, but I think we need to have someone in the police department do an evaluation. On if we have our four traffic guys, how many tickets on average are they gonna write a month? And therefore, assuming eighty percent of that goes through the courts, what are we gonna get for revenue? Prove that we can do this because right now council is thinking we don't have the money. And I'm a citizen and I want my police force the way it was when Mark Myers was here. I want my police force back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Are you ready?
I'm gonna piggyback on, I'm gonna piggyback on that one. I understand what your intentions are, Chief, as far as having more community involvement between the force and the residents. But that doesn't take anything at the moment other than you saying, drive down the street, stop and say hi. Well, they have time to sit in my parking lot behind me for a half hour, two cars yesterday. While I had speeders out front. It 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 only takes a minute for an officer to stop. If he's cruising his area. I don't even know what if there's sergeants with specific areas. Somebody said there was. I don't know. But if they're cruising through and they're not going to anything, you can't tell me that every minute of the day. Minus their lunch, which they're entitled to in breaks. That they can't stop or find a street where someone's outside and stop and talk to them? We need more officers to do that? I don't, I don't, I'm not buying it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just to be fair, Chief, I'm I'm Lori, Lori and I have great, Lori and I, we have great conversations. Everything, but respect to cops in and parking lots and stuff, when they respond to a call.
Right.
And they gotta go write their reports in the car. They park somewhere and park the car. So I I don't wanna make it seem that our cops are sitting, not doing anything.
Does it take two officers?
Yeah, uh maybe a sergeant stay reviewing the report with them, yes.
Okay, then I digress on that. I'll take that back. But does that. Still mean they don't have time to go through the neighborhood and stop and say hi to someone?
But no, no, I agree. I'm with you. I'm with you a thousand percent on this. I don't disagree. But what I'm trying to say is that. I don't want people also thinking our cop, our officers are sitting in parking lots. Because what happens is that if they have to go back and write the police report in the department, we're losing two cops. They can't get the car comes and responds to them.
I will.
So I always pull up to when they're sitting at the master doing a.
I'll take that part back. I have no problem saying that I'm wrong. But it's what, and and and. Thank you for correcting me, but not everybody's getting corrected. So they're getting a bad picture of the police from that, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Did I just have a bad picture of the police? Now, how many residents are having a bad picture of the police?
A lot.
How many police are stopping to try to change that picture when they have an opportunity?
I see them out there, to be honest with you. They're trying. They're not gonna do, it's not gonna be a hundred percent, but they are trying with what they have.
It's it's one of those back in the day, they run bikes, they run motorcycles, they were stopping.
We don't have the manpower, unfortunately.
Exactly. But if they're being run that ragged, that they can't get a moment to talk to a resident. Then we really do need more police, right?
We do. We do.
So that just uh okay. Am I making sense or am I?
No, you're making sense.
Okay.
At the end of the day, that we you you saying, me asking for more police officers, so I can get an officer to. To be able to talk to the communities, really, it's not what I'm trying to do. All of us should be community policing. We all should be stopping.
True.
Conversation with you.
Yeah.
Find out what's going on. But having an extra officer to focus on community policing is gonna help. It's gonna help you. It's gonna help me.
You think one for each end is enough? I'm sorry.
No, it's not. It's not, but this is the situation we're in. I'll take what I can get.
Right.
You know, I'd love to have three. Guys, we can handle this discussion.
All right. Thank you.
The email, but I will say, every police officer should be on the road, should be trained on community policing.
I agree.
Every single person. Cause when I was growing up as a kid, we all wanted to say hello to the police officers.
I agree.
All Lori's saying is that, you know, hey, have a conversation. She's in the backyard and you see two cops. She's walking a dog. Wave. Let them come up and say hello. Let them be approaching. Um, I'm so sorry.
And you and you're right. When I was growing up, I knew most of the police officers, at least eighty percent of them by name.
Yes.
I mean, that's the type of community. And also too, talking about the police officers sitting in the parking lot writing the report, I think it's better they sit in the parking lot and write the. Reports and go back to the station. Cause if there's an emergency, they can probably interrupt that report and take off right away. Then come back and finish your report, you know, it makes them more accessible to the community.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, no, no. Some people don't.
I mean, well. I mean, well. I'm I'm so sorry. I'm gonna have to take the stance now.
You're sorry that you have to take me?
No, I'm s- I'm saying sorry that I have to stop her from speaking because it's now officially your time.
Renee Myrna Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. So um I I can't speak about the police, you know, knowing somebody because. They knew our house real well growing up, so I don't even wanna know where it is. Yeah, but uh. I agree. They they used to stop or they used to at least say hi, you know, I I waved at the police officers when they go by, but they just like look at me, I'm suspect. So I just quit doing it. So. Anyway, the um I was thinking, you know, as far as the fund goes for the uniforms or whatever you need for these extra people. I would be happy to donate on a regular basis to the that fund. And I'm sure there's other people that would like to donate to that fund. And I'm sure there's people that that have resources to donate quite a bit to that fund. Just to make sure that how you do it legally set up the area that where we could donate that to, you know?
Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk afterwards.
Yeah, and then so and then the other thing is, well, I know you don't have the manpower to, you know, police everybody on the street. So I say set up an area at the police station. Where people that know that they were speeding can voluntarily come in there and drop some money and say, yep, I was speeding today. So I'm gonna put this money in. And you'd be surprised, people will do that, you know? Would be nice.
How many?
But anyway, that was that was my ideas. That's it. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So today's generation is so waiting. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a Venmo.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Wallet, you all.
Counselor Chair, I just wanna add the what the community policing officer, not just going door to door and talking to residents. I think that the the lead officer for the explorers. Is the community police officer, right? Liaison. So this is one of their jobs too. So they do many things. So uh. I think we're heading in the right direction, to be honest with you. My 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 next thing is, anyone else on Zoom?
Wait, I have one more idea, though. I was just gonna tag this on. Even if even if they can't say hello, you know, if they see a citizen, you know, and a citizen's waving at them, just beep your horn. You know, just beep your horn to acknowledge that the citizen's waving at them or saying hi or something. That's all.
Thank you.
Hit him with a star chase.
Bring it up at roll call.
On a on a hundred ticket.
Anyone on Zoom? Let's take it to Zoom now. Are you gonna get to speak? Anyone else in the audience? Seeing non-homework. Ah, come on, Vince.
No, sorry.
Time's up.
Sorry.
Yeah, top flights. Vince next, one of the most, I love when Vince gets up and speaks.
Hey, I just want to uh throw this out there. Vince Trupkoski, Columbia Street. LT, new boss. Um. Considering that you're uh or whatever you are, um. Did you shoot yourself in the foot? I got an uh. That's, you know, was it one of those training things with the drone?
That's it.
Okay. There's probably more.
What surgery?
We're badgering our police chief. Hey, hey. He's gonna go after you. Um.
I'm done.
Yeah, I see. I ran out of air. Damn.
That's good.
Um, I gotta take my pills. Thanks. Um. Wow, losing concentration there. And my wife's not gonna be happy with you tonight. Well. Mode, help out. Um, on this budget here, here, the emergency manager, if you're keeping that in the budget, taking it out of the budget, whatever you're doing with it. Um, when I was at the station, there was talk about one of the command officers being an emergency manager. So why can't one of our officers be an emergency manager? And the higher-ups like the uh deputy chief or all the captains. Um.
Emergency manager, it when we when that position is open, you can apply for it. You can apply for it. Doesn't have to be from within.
Tom's gonna be the future. It's different.
Tom's gonna be the future, okay. So we'll leave it up to Tom and, you know, go from there. Have a good night, everybody. Take care.
Thank you, guys. Nice evening, everyone.
You.
Reporting stopped.
You don't need a motion.
Studies that say we don't have to.